All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May twenty-third meeting of the Jersey City Planning Board. If we could come to order and please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Yes, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May third, in the year two thousand and twenty-three. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with the scheduled five thirty P M start time. This planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right. Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Present and accounted for.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
We have five commissioners present. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. Could we swear in the stuff, please, Mike? All right, I see Cameron, Maggie, Sarah, and Francisco. Do you guys want any testimony you get tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. Cam, do we have correspondence? I know we have a number of items being carried.
Yes, Chairman. So we have nine items on our agenda that have requested to carry to June thirteenth. There is one item, a tenth item, which is one fifteen Wayne Street, and they have requested to carry to a date uncertain, and they will have to renotice. So one fifteen Wayne Street, item eighteen on the agenda, they will not be heard tonight, and they will have to renotice. So you will receive notice again, and they will not be on tonight. So let's go down the list. Under Old Business, item B, it's case P twenty-two dash two nineteen for a one-year extension. Address is four twenty-eight to four thirty-four Central Avenue. They've requested to carry to June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Item twelve, under New Business, case P twenty-three dash zero zero eight for minor site plan with C variances. Address is one oh seven Magnolia Avenue. They've requested to carry to June thirteenth with preservation of notice. Item sixteen on the agenda, case is P twenty-two dash one six one. Address is two three one twelfth Street. They've requested to carry with preservation of notice to June thirteenth. Item seventeen on the agenda, case P twenty-two dash one nine nine. This is address three fifty-two Pavonia Avenue. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to June thirteenth. Item twenty-three on the agenda, case number P twenty-three dash zero zero four. Address is thirty-two to thirty-four Jones Street. I just want to put on the record that the entry of this item onto our agenda was entered onto the the wrong address. This is actually thirty-six Jones Street. And anyway, they have requested to carry to June thirteenth with preservation of notice. Item twenty-five on the agenda, case P twenty-three dash zero twelve. Address is three forty-four seven Kennedy Boulevard. They've requested to carry with preservation of notice to June thirteenth. Item twenty-seven on our agenda, case P twenty-three dash zero zero six. This is for an administrative amendment. Address is one forty-three dash one forty-five Monastello Avenue. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to June thirteenth. Item thirty on the agenda, case P twenty-two dash one six three. Address is thirty seventy-nine JFK Boulevard. They've requested to carry with preservation of notice to June thirteenth. And very last, we have case P twenty-three dash zero ten, a conditional use at one nineteen storms. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to June thirteenth.
All right. Thanks, Cam. Uh, do we want to bring up Dish Wireless real quick?
Yes, I will look for Chris Quinn and the attendees and promote them. I actually don't see Chris out there, so. If Dish Wireless is present, if you could please raise your hand, I I will promote you. Okay, promoting Jay Fairweather.
Jay Fairweather, can you turn on your computer camera and unmute yourself?
Hi, I'm Chief.
Hello.
I'm Chris Quinn's partner. He's at another hearing this evening, which he had already started, so I'm here on behalf of Dish. And if you would like, I can go through the applications rather quickly. My engineer is here in case there are.
So Ms. Fairweather, you have a problem.
Okay.
I have five board members, which constitutes a quarrel. I have one board member that has to recuse himself on this matter. And as a result, we lose the quarrel.
We do have a problem. Okay. Can we get it solved for the next hearing, do you think?
Absolutely.
Um, I very much appreciate that you were going to hear us this evening. Sorry, there's a quorum issue. I believe the next hearing date is June twelfth.
Uh, June thirteenth, I believe.
Yes.
So Ms. Fairweather, I apologize. It was my intention to bring you right up front tonight, and we'll make that happen first thing on June thirteenth for you.
Thank you.
Chairman, why don't we call because we have this issue on more than one of Ms. Fairweather's matters or just this one?
No, it's it's two items tonight, so I'll call. I'll call both cases one at a time, and I'll carry them. So the first one is item nineteen on the agenda is a minor site plan for a cell antenna at one forty-one Newark Avenue. That's case P two-three dash zero three seven. So we'll be carrying that to a date certain June thirteenth with preservation of notice. And also, item twenty is for a minor site plan for a cell antenna at four thirty Palisade Avenue. That case number is P two-three dash zero two seven. Once again, we'll be carrying that to a date certain of June thirteenth with preservation of notice.
Thank you.
Chairman, let's just make sure that we have a proper form on June thirteenth to address that and let this Fairweather and Mr. Quinn know so that they're not left in the dark.
Definitely.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, so let's jump into Old Business. Item A is case P two-two dash zero three three is a one-year extension for thirty-two Cole Street.
Promoted Thomas Lee.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tom Lean from Connell Foley. This is an extension request, which normally does not require notice. However, there was a variance associated with the original approval, so I did notice that I would just ask the council confirm that he has received my affidavit.
Santo, I don't believe I sent you that one in the email package, so unless it was sent separately.
I did provide it to planning. However, the burden is obviously on the applicant. So if you don't have it, I understand, and I'm ready to proceed.
Let's see if it's on the portal.
Yeah.
I don't think it is. I checked. The the same goes for three oh two Morris. If there was notice for that, it it didn't get sent to Santa.
Understood. Counsel, would you be okay with me proceeding, again, given that it is my burden?
So Counsel, I will take the representation. You understand it is your burden. I cannot mark it for purposes of evidence, but based on your representation that you did provide such notice, we will proceed. And I'd ask that you make sure that gets into the city records if it's not there already.
Absolutely, I will do so. The application before you this evening is a request for a one-year extension that the board previously approved. This is the second extension we are seeking this evening. The original approval expanded an existing three-story building with ground floor commercial. The applicant both lives in the building and runs the business in the building, so obviously there are some timing issues about moving out of the building and shutting down the business. So they're just seeking a one-year approval one more time to try and time up being able to get out of the building, close the building down, so they could actually proceed with permitting and the work required to expand the building.
Okay, understood. Yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else? Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody from the public that wants to comment on this application? If so, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Saying no public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
Only asking that the original conditions remain in effect.
And we would agree to that because it's an extension of the resolution as approved, of course.
Great. Thank you, Council.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash zero three three as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If if I could just say I'm gonna remain on because I'm gonna cover Chuck's extension at a number state or letters state.
Gotcha. That's that's actually up next, so.
Yep.
Uh, so let's call item C is case P two-three dash zero eight nine is a one-year extension for three oh two Morris Pesson Drive.
Uh, yes, again, for the record, Tom Lean of Connell Foley. I I actually can't make a representation as to notice here. I'm I'm not sure if Chuck did make notice here. If he did, I will absolutely provide it to the board, but all that said, I'm comfortable proceeding this evening. Again, in these these cases, it's really just an abundance of caution that we notice. This is an application for a two-year extension. I know that it says one year on the agenda. This actually expired in December. Our letter, which we sent into the planning board, does note that we are requesting two years. This is just essentially, this is the first time we're asking for an extension. This is just a matter of clearing the property and still in the process of seeking permits. It's the only reason we're asking for two years is because of the timeline of expiring in December. So it's just a request to extend the the project, which is an eight-story hotel with a hundred and twenty-three rooms in it for a period of two years until December of two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Council. I have no questions. Anybody else?
Nope.
All right. Thank you, everybody. If there's anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this extension, please raise your hand. If you are calling in and you want to comment, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, anything?
Same. We only ask that the attorney, particularly the original conditions, once again.
Absolutely, we agree to that condition.
Okay, thank you, Council.
Sir Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-three dash zero eight nine as presented to us tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
And Chairman.
Hi.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to item nine is case P two-three dash zero six six is a historic designation for three forty-three point five Eighth Street.
Is there anyone I should promote, Maggie?
I'm muted. Yeah, so if Mike, Michael, Giselle, I believe I saw Genovia on here. If you guys could just raise your hands so that Cam can promote you for this.
Okay.
And then if anyone else from your team is joining us. All right. Sarah, are you ready to go? See, she's muted.
Hello?
Hi, guys. How are you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Giselle.
Yeah, hi, Giselle. Give us just a sec to get everyone promoted, and then we'll swear you guys in. Let me just.
Of course.
All right, why don't we go ahead and swear them in while I see if Sarah's computer is all right?
So is there any order to these operations?
Uh, no, we can do. I mean, on my screen, it shows is Michael first, Genovia second, Giselle third.
All right.
Why don't we just go ahead with that?
All right, uh, so yeah, just swearing all at the same time, that's fine. Okay, so Michael, Genovia, and then I don't see Giselle. Turn your video on.
Um, let me see where it went. Is that it?
Should be right next to mute.
I can't get back out of this. Hold on. Oh, there I go. Okay. Um, let me see. Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
We can, yes.
But can you see me or no? I how do I go? How do I get on?
You're on. You just need to push the right next to where the mute button is. There should be one to start your video.
Um, okay, here we go. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, I see you now. All right, so.
Okay.
Michael, Genovia, and Giselle, if you guys could just raise your right hands. And do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And then just do me a favor and speak one at a time, please. Thanks. Yes. Okay, Maggie, are we qualifying anyone as experts?
Nope, not necessary.
Okay.
All right.
And I'm sorry, Giselle, could you just give me your full name?
Giselle Alisea.
Can you spell it for me?
Um, yes, G I S E L E. Last name, A L I C E A.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Sarah, you are good to go. Take it away.
All right. Did everybody hear me?
We can. Thanks.
I had to switch to my phone because my computer decided to crash as soon as I tried to unmute myself. Okay. I I'm Sarah Quinlan. I'm one of the Historic Preservation Specialists with the Historic Preservation Commission. And tonight, we are seeking the local designation of the house at three forty-three and a half Eighth Street for its association with the Pelagati Extravaganza. Uh, the property is already within the boundaries of the Hamilton Park District and district.
Sarah, you keep breaking up. I'm sorry, I'm not getting you.
All right. What was the last thing you heard?
That's within Hamilton Park. Maybe if you want to shut off your video so it comes through Mark Claire.
Okay, let's try that. Uh, it's within the Hamilton Park Historic District. So there are no changes in regulations, and this was recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission at our February sixth meeting. Uh, three forty-three and a half Eighth Street was the primary residence of Venus Pelagati Extravaganza, a local ballroom figure whose story was prominently featured in the nineteen ninety documentary Paris is Burning, and many of her interviews were conducted in the house. Ballroom and ball culture was founded as an underground LGBTQ pageant circuit by primarily African-American and Latinx members, and most ballroom participants belong to groups known as houses, which are comprised of chosen family, and Venus's house was the House of Extravaganza. Venus was tragically murdered in nineteen eighty-eight, but through the House of Extravaganza and her interviews in Paris is Burning, her legacy lives on. And tonight, we are thrilled to invite Michael Robertson, Genovia Chase, and Giselle Alisea, Giselle Extravaganza, the current mother of the House Extravaganza, to discuss Venus's legacy with you. So guys, take it away.
Thank you.
Giselle, you want to go first?
Um, I thought I was going third.
So I'll speak. So real quickly, you know, one of the things that when we think about Venus and her legacy is to think about particularly the the kinds of situations that a lot of Black, Latinx, trans women are experiencing today. I'll do this real briefly. We know that that this week, Friday, will be the third anniversary of George Floyd's murder. And we we all paid attention to it because we're all doing a COVID, and it was a global pause. What would wind up happening six days later was that a Black trans woman, Ayana DeYoung, was beat and brutalized at the same time, six days later, by about thirty or forty community members, drugged out of a store, beat to a pulp, store clerk tried to protect her, and somehow she had hysterical wherewithal to say that if I'm going to be beat and brutalized, I'm going to drag myself back into the store so that it can be done on camera so that the world over can see what happens to Black, Latinx, trans women all day, every day. And this was three years ago. Again, six days later after George Floyd, still today, there's been not a large outcry. And what Venus' legacy represents is that even today, thirty years after, thirty-something years after her murder, the same thing continues to happen to Black and Latinx trans women. And so for this to be a landmark as a historical space, for us to be able to take the space and do things with it would do so much, not only for the house wall community, but particularly for Black, Latinx, trans women. And so I'm very proud to be part of this project. I'm very proud that to be working with my daughter Genovia, and particularly very proud to be working with Giselle, because I said to Giselle for for a for a very long time that she is a living embodiment of what Venus memory is, so.
Thank you.
That was beautiful, and I would just add that I think in the time politically right now, where transgender rights are being rolled back so continuously, it's of utter importance that we're doing some as much types of direct action as possible to make tangible tools and things possible for the transgender community to confront and to survive through such invisibilizing times through there being blockages of just the dialogue of of being transgendered to their being blockings, to people accessing medical care, et cetera. It's important for um, a space for the community to be able to look back on and see years down the line that connects to the legacy of the ongoing slaughter that has happened to people in community, but also the ongoing strength and values that people of the trans community have been able to contribute to society at large. Venus is one of those people. Her interviews in that house in Paris is Burning have inspired who knows how many people to find refuge in not only the house bar community, but in the north, in Newark City and Newark, New Jersey, to find liberation and 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 find and discover what it means for them to have family and safety amid all the different societal uh discrepancies and circumstances that we may face socially as people. For the house bar community, this is of utter importance because there is no particular landmark that exists physically for us, and one of the things that we often do in community is come together and have town halls and have conversations on how can we sustain and archive the community and have something to be remembered by. The house bar community is over a hundred years old, yet this is the invisibility of us has been kind of reduced more so to performativity. You've seen our community in places such as Pose FX. The documentary Paris is Burning is legendary as it is. There's even more channels where the house bar community has been highlighted and amplified, even down to Beyonce's tour currently. Connections, you know, or to the legacy of the trans women that have created that actual space and the craft that we celebrate and that brings so much joy to society. And so it's of utter importance that something like this exists and that we make such a drastic action.
Well, I I just wanted to say thank you, Mike, for your beautiful words, and thank you, Genovia, for being part of this amazing movement, really. Um, I just want to say how important this is to our community because we need support. We need visible support, and we need to feel the support from the community, from the city, from the state, anywhere we can feel it, because we're desperately needing it right now. And even for me, like, I've been living this lifestyle for for about thirty-something years, and I'm still struggling to walk down the street without somebody harassing me or somebody saying something to me, which makes me blow a fuse each time because I I'm just walking down the street trying to live my life, and this will send a message, a clear message to the trans people that there is a place that we can go to get support. We desperately need a place of support, and specifically for transgender people. So this would be a milestone. This would be an achievement, and this would be a support system that has always been needed and always will be needed. So and as speaking as the mother of the House of Extravaganza, I would be honored to to be a part of this and to leave a legacy like this with Genovia, with Mike, with everybody who's working on this. So I just would love to feel that support, and that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Sarah, do you do you have anything else before we open it up for questions?
Uh, yeah, just to kind of close out, we're asking the planning board to vote yes to recommend for approval to the city council and we're open to any questions you guys have.
All right. Thank you. Um, the only question I have actually is what happens to the property? Is this gonna be used for something, or or is it just a plaque that goes outside?
So at this point in time, any future use dictated by this designation is kind of up to be determined by the property owner. The actual, the what we're seeking now is an individual local designation. As Sarah mentioned, it's already part of the Hamilton Park Historic District. So procedurally, this effectively does nothing, had no additional constraints to the property owner, and they would have to follow the same procedures that they do currently to make any changes to the property. So changes to the property could be anything from plaques to their normal HPC review changes.
Okay, understood. Um, anybody else? Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, everybody. At this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this historic designation, please raise your hand, and if you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Move to close the public portion?
Second.
Second.
We do have a hand raised.
Oh. Promoting Chris Perez. Cruz has to be quicker, Chairman.
Ah, I'm always watching. Always watching, Doc.
Hey, good evening, everybody.
Hi, Chris. How you doing? I'll swear you in, all right?
Sure.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please, and give us your address?
Chris Perez, P E R E Z, one eighty-five Carteret Avenue.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Good evening. Uh, welcome. You know our drill. We have three minutes for you.
I won't even take that long. This is a really awesome effort by everybody involved. I won't even take that long. Um, this is a really awesome effort by everybody involved. Um, I think this is a great way to drive awareness um and support for this community. I'm really glad to see the Historic Preservation Office um working uh with the people involved to recognize um this site. And um I just wanted to give support from the Jersey City Landmarks Conservancy. We think this is a really awesome effort here. And we look forward to seeing um other locally landmark sites as the years progress. So just thank you. Thanks, everybody. As a member of the LGBTQ community, um, this really hits personally with me as well. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Wow.
All right, Chris, appreciate your time. All right, anybody else from public? Once again, if you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise that hand.
I'll remove to close the public.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Another second, public is closed. Okay, so we obviously have uh historic's uh comments. Um, Sarah, if it's okay, we'll just move to a uh motion.
Sure.
Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve case P two, three dash zero, six, six as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and another second for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, this is an easy one. Um, this is a this is good. Anytime we do something good in Jersey City, we're all for it. So I vote aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
It's uh with uh somewhat sadness because of how Venus departed the earth. Uh, but certainly a born Jersey Cityite who would have been fifty-eight years old in a day today.
Wow.
We commemorate uh all people. And we, you know, say that Venus is seen, you're seen and uh Jersey City is diverse, inclusive and loving and I wholeheartedly vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
I just want to say thank you to Michael, Giovanni and Giselle for the background information. Of course, diversity do exist here in Jersey City and we welcome that. So I vote as aye.
And Chairman Lexin.
So given the the national climate, I think we all know uh what's going on out there and it's terrifying. Um, I I I'm proud to live in a place where this can happen. And uh, you know, planning boards don't often see something like this and I'm happy to live here and experience this. Um, let me get the legal stuff out of the way. Uh, we do have a designation and a recommendation from uh Historic Preservation. I don't think there's any detriment to the master plan or the zone plan or the historic district. So uh, from a legal aspect, I think it's an easy one for me. And if anybody knows me or tunes into these meetings, um, you know, I I try and choose my words wisely. And I, you know, I've been thinking about this all day. And I I gotta tell you, I think the best thing I can do and I think the country would be a better place for it is just listen. I'm not going to say anything, just listen. So uh with that, my vote is aye. And congratulations, guys.
Motion carries all in favor, approval with recommendation to city council for rec uh designation.
All right, thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. Uh, let's move on to item ten, in this case, P two, two dash one, six, eight is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for one fifty-seven Newark Ave and three twenty-four Barrow Street.
Uh, thank you, commissioners. Uh, thank you, Chairman, Tom Lean, again for the record. Uh, the application before you tonight is a notice case. I just want to make sure that council is in receipt of my affidavit.
Thank you, Council. I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at one fifty-seven Newark Ave and three twenty-four Barrow Street here in the city. I note that it was originally scheduled for March seventh and carried through tonight, preserving the notice. All does appear to be in order. We can mark it as A one for the record.
Thank you so much. Uh, the application before you tonight is seeking uh preliminary and final major site plan approval with a deviation. Um, it is a project that fronts on to Newark Avenue and continues through to the corner of Barrow and Christopher Columbus Drive. The proposal this evening is to demolish the existing structure, which is the Fabco Shoes Building, which I'm sure many of us are familiar with, uh, which fronts on to Newark Avenue. Um, it is a mixed-use development. Uh, it is located within the Newark Avenue Downtown Redevelopment Plan. It exists within two zones. There's A, which fronts on to Newark Avenue and C, which continues through and fronts on both Barrow and Christopher Columbus. Uh, the application is a six-story uh mixed-use building with ground floor retail facing on to uh the Newark Avenue side uh and forty-one dwelling units. Uh, we are asking for one deviation, which relates to the permitted bulk of the six-story, which is essentially a penthouse on the building, which is permitted under the redevelopment plan. Uh, I have two witnesses uh this evening. I have Aaron Prun- Bruno and I also have Charles Height, uh, who will uh come on to testify as to the one deviation we are seeking. So with that, I would ask that Aaron come up and uh present the uh the architectural and civil plans, which are submitted uh together.
Aaron, I'm just gonna swear in before you go, okay? Be courageous, right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Uh, Aaron, last name Pumo, P U M O.
Thank you.
Ms. Pumo, good evening. Uh, I don't recall if we've qualified you, have we?
You have not.
We have not. Okay, let's just uh run through your background, your education and all your licensing, please.
Sure. I have a Bachelor's of Architecture from NJIT. I'm an associate at English Architecture and Engineering for over ten years now. I'm licensed in New Jersey as an architect and my license is current and uh in good standing.
Okay, thank you. That's what we're looking for and uh you're qualified.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and go through uh the project.
And Ms. Pumo, if there's anything in this presentation that's not in our packet, please make sure uh we know and we can mark it into evidence and uh get it to uh planning staff.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I I did review the plans that were on the uh the portal and uh the the most current uh are the ones that we submitted. Uh, however, uh, Ms. Prumo, if there is, as the chairman said, if anything new that we didn't submit is there, please identify it and let me know so we can have it marked.
Yeah, so the the presentation I'm going to go through now is a series of color plans uh to explain the project and these have not been submitted, but they do represent the same floor plans that are are in the portal that were submitted.
So counsel, let's mark the whole slideshow then is A two. Tell us how many slides and uh if it's got a title and a date, please.
Each uh each sheet has a different title, but um the date of all the sheets is oh, five, oh, nine, twenty-three.
And how many sheets do you have?
Uh, give me one second. Six sheets.
Very good. So A two will be six sheets of colored architecturals with a date of was that May ninth, twenty twenty-three?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll uh proceed. Um, excuse me, as Tom mentioned, uh, when Tom, did you have something to say?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Uh, the this project site is located in the Newark Ave Redevelopment Plan. We're proposing a six-story plus penthouse mixed-use building that consists of uh a retail space on the ground floor that extends through from the corner of Bow Street and Christopher Columbus Drive to uh Newark Avenue. The retail space we're proposing is uh four thousand three hundred seventy-seven square feet. And it's this blue, it's indicated by this blue hatch uh on the floor plan or on the site plan. Um, we're proposing forty-one residential units, a total of nineteen studios with an average square footage of four hundred fifty-four square feet, twenty-one one-bedrooms with an average square footage of six hundred sixty square feet and one two-bedroom unit with, which is uh six hundred fifty-nine square feet. The gross building is proposed at four forty-seven thousand two hundred forty-six square feet. We are also including a uh a full basement with a storm vault um within a portion of the basement and the project is essentially a full lock coverage with the exception of an eight-foot setback along Christopher Columbus Drive um over here. Okay. I'm just gonna zoom in a little so we can focus. Okay, um, I'll just briefly walk you through the the floor plans. Uh, what you're looking at here in gray is the basement floor plan. Uh, down here in the bottom left corner is our storm vault. We have a bike, bike storage, uh trash compactor room and the remaining uh extent of the basement is a storage. The first floor plan is a uh combination of re- the retail space, which goes through from Barrow Street all the way to Newark Ave on this side, and that's indicated by the the blue color. And the orange is our residential lobby, complete with um package room and uh mailboxes, also an elevator lobby as well. Our second through fourth floor is essentially uh the same. We're proposing a mixture of one bedrooms and uh studio units. Same thing for the uh third floor and the fourth floor is uh the same as the second floor. It's a typical floor. When you get up to the fifth floor, we have a setback along Newark Avenue. Uh, this two-bedroom unit has a private terrace uh over here indicated by uh the green, green hatch. And then as you go up to the sixth floor, the building steps back one more time along the Newark Avenue side. Uh, again, there's a mixture of studios and uh one-bedroom units on this floor. And then the penthouse floor steps back one more time um along uh Barrow Street and Christopher Columbus Drive. And each of these units that fronts Christopher Columbus Drive and Barrow Street has its own private terrace, which is indicated by this uh green, green color here. This is a uh rendering taken at the corner of Barrow Street and Christopher Columbus Drive. Uh, this is the the proposed um architectural language of the building. It consists of a brick veneer and an off-white color and a bronze metal paneling, accent paneling. There, and I also want to mention there are three sections of bay windows along Christopher Columbus Drive as well uh indicated here. On the other side of the building, the Newark Avenue side, um we paid a little, we're tasked with paying attention to the historic nature of this street. And so we used um elements from previous buildings along Newark Avenue to incorporate into the building to uh have it blend nicely into the the fabric of of Newark Avenue. So this, the second story bay is pretty typical of some of the more um historic buildings along this this avenue here. Uh, you can see at the ground floor, we have our our retail entrance with some signage and then the units above with some some punched window openings and the setbacks, as I mentioned, um, as I went through the the floor plans. Well, that, that's the extent of uh this exhibit. I could go into the detailed drawings if anyone has any questions or I could address some of the uh engineering compliance um as well. Did anyone have any questions on the building?
Uh, Ms. Puma, I I would just quickly ask that you do share the floor plans to just quickly run through the unit type and access through the hallways, especially as we get up to the taller floors.
Give me a second, I'll go to the I'll just have to zoom in on the part of the building and scroll. Um, this is the second floor, which is a a typical floor. Right here, there's the elevator lobby, stair core. We have a trash chute and a telephone data closet. Each unit's connected by this uh common corridor that extends all the way up to the uh Newark Avenue side of the building. Um, and here's our second uh stair stairwell that brings you uh all the way down to the building. Uh, both stairwells extend all the way to the uh penthouse level. I can uh zoom in a little more. Again, the the um third and fourth floor are the same. Here's a image, uh floor plan of the fifth floor. This is that setback. You can see the the common corridor here uh with the stair tower elevator, um, the other stair tower in the in the trash chute. And again, those those common elements extend all the way up to provide uh the necessary means of egress for all of the units there. Uh, we also have rooftop access for uh maintenance.
Um, and as we are asking for the deviation as it relates to the bulk of the penthouse, would you just mind going over the setbacks for the penthouse area?
Uh, sure. So it would actually be helpful if I draw on here. The uh setback for the penthouse that we're asking for is essentially this, sorry. This area here outside is within the setback that's indicated um in the zoning ordinance. So we're asking that these two units and partially this unit is is the variance we're asking for. We, the building doesn't completely set back all the way to this um area in the plan on the on the penthouse level.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
All right, thank you, counsel. Um, the only question I do have, uh, actually two questions, uh, the retail space. Those are two separate retail spaces?
So, yeah, current, I'll just zoom in on that one. Currently, they're shown as one. Um, they could be subdivided if necessary, but right now we're proposing this one through retail space. Um, there's an elevation change from Newark Avenue to uh this retail space on Barrow and uh CCD Drive. So we're we're providing a uh handicap ramp to get you down from the upper level, which is a little higher on Newark Avenue side down to the uh Barrow Street side.
Okay, understood. And uh, there's only one retail entrance on the Columbus side? There's nothing on Barrow?
Uh, correct. Well, we have a uh means of egress on on Barrow here for the retail space, but this wasn't intended to be an entrance. The the main entrance for the retail spaces along CCD.
Okay. Um, as we get into the residential floors, I don't see any fire doors in the the egress hallway. Uh, where is the area of refuge in there?
So the area of refuge would be we would have to uh draw, excuse me, add a wall here with an egress door and it'd be right here in this uh elevator lobby.
Okay, understood. Um, that's it for me. I have no other questions for your uh architecture. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, with with that, I would ask that uh Charles Height uh testify as to the requested uh rare uh deviation uh as it relates to the penthouse area.
Hey, Charles, how you doing?
Good.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please? Yes, Charles Height, last name is spelled H E Y D T.
Thank you.
And so, hey, good evening. Uh, we've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
It is current and in good standing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. You're qualified.
Appreciate that. Um, I just, for the benefit of the board, I did want to share um one screen from the redevelopment plan. The relief we need uh or requesting tonight by way of deviation is specifically with respect to what's called the uh building bonus height regulating plan. Uh, so that's a map in the redevelopment plan. You can see this sheet. Uh, I don't know if we need to mark this public document. Um, but uh, this is the property, if you zoom into the intersection of Newark, Barrow and Christopher Columbus. And just to helpful, to hopefully help the board understand the request, these colors and the numbers uh are coordinated with the number of stories. So four stories along Newark Avenue, setback five stories, the orange is six stories. And the plan does account for the penthouse story uh centrally here. Um, as Ms. Pumo referenced, in this area is where we need relief, where six stories is called out um in the diagram. Uh, and we are proposing the And we are proposing the location of of a portion of the penthouse along Barrow Street near Columbus Avenue. So that's the technical relief being sought tonight. Penthouse stories, a seventh story, if you will, are permitted in this redevelopment plan, so it doesn't eclipse the maximum permitted building height. There is no maximum building height in feet as per the plan. So again, we're not requesting relief in terms of building height. This is really about massing and setback from from Barrow Street. So we are.
Can you just tell us the, I think it was page twenty six?
Correct. Page twenty six of twenty nine of of the plan. And it's the map five, building bonus height regulating plan, dated March twenty first, two thousand thirteen.
So chairman, we don't have to mark it because it's obviously part of the redevelopment plan, which is our document. I just wanted it articulated on the record so that it was clear what what sheet Mr. Height was referencing.
Okay, understood. Thank you, counsel. So along Newark Avenue, there's two tiers, two setbacks, if you will. We comply with those. Along Columbus Avenue, at the ground level, there's the eight foot setback for the widened sidewalk. We comply with that. When you look at the corner of Barrow and Columbus at the sixth story, we are introducing a pen portion of the penthouse level where the diagram shows or only calls for six stories. So that's the additional story in terms of the diagram. And it's also quasi a step back or a setback, if you will, from that diagram. If we took measurements from the diagram, there's no explicit dimension, but if we didn't measure it as a diagram, it would be approximately twenty five feet. That diagram does reference the lot lines. So one thing to call out is this property along Columbus Avenue is fifty feet in width. The, if you were just looking at the independent properties, the existing property is only twenty five feet with. So the fact that we double the width, we're able to still provide an appropriate setback, which is approximately seven and a half feet. While introducing that penthouse level at the intersection of of Barrow and Christopher Columbus. So the deviation, in my opinion, is, does meet that. Benefits outweigh the detriments test, the flexible standard, where we're able to have a better efficiency of that penthouse floor. We're able to still manage the overall building mass because we have a greater width, a greater portion of the property along Columbus and Barrow than we do on Newark. So we are able to accommodate a little bit of a larger penthouse level. In terms of other requirements, that would be helpful. The redevelopment plan does have minimum floor to ceiling heights, twelve feet for the ground floor, nine feet for residential floors. There is no maximum minimum floor to ceiling height. So albeit we're in in compliance, this structure could be taller in that area. Because there is no maximum floor to ceiling height. But again, the proposed structure is is within reason and generally compliant with with those minimum requirements. I mentioned the ground floor setback that's being implemented as by way of the requirement for a little bit of a wire street frontage along Christopher Columbus Avenue. We do have special reasons that we're advancing with this application. We're guiding appropriate development. In Newark Avenue, the board is well aware is is a very lively mixed use commercial residential above pedestrian only corridor in the city. In this redevelopment plan, there is a lot of goals and objectives that speak to pedestrian walkable neighborhood, things like that. And in terms of municipal land use law, we're advancing purpose A, guiding appropriate development in this location of the city. We are also furthering purpose E to establish appropriate population densities. Again, the forty one units is in an area of the city where you have high access to mass transit, mix of uses. It's an appropriate location for the proposed structure and also to further purpose I to create a desirable visual environment. That's the positive criteria. With respect to the negative criteria, again, we did review the shadow impact study that was prepared by Ms. Pumo's office. The marginal increase of the expanded penthouse floor would fall on the rooftops of adjacent structures. So there's there's no negative in impact in the existing conditions. And I can't speak to any future development of the northwest corner of this block. But it doesn't appear that there would be any substantial impediment to that corner of Newark and Barrow to be improved down the road by way of what's being proposed today. With respect to, so that essentially that that justifies that there's no negative impact to light and air on existing conditions as well as any future development at this block. With respect to the redevelopment plan, again, we comply with all the all other of the bulk requirements, the minimum floor and ceiling heights, the setbacks on Newark Avenue, the street widening along Christopher Columbus, as well as advancing goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan, which I'll just reference a few. Requiring an active ground floor, commercial, commercial ground floor, improving pedestrian environment and streetscape, maintaining existing character and height of Newark Avenue. That's where we have the four setback to five, setback to six stories that we're proposing. And improving the vitality of Christopher Christopher Columbus Drive by providing retail frontage on the ground floor and providing a wider sidewalk for better pedestrian access. We're achieving all those objectives and goals of this redevelopment plan, notwithstanding the relief being sought. I believe that this does meet the justifications and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Height. I have no questions. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, sir. We appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else?
That's it. The, I only have the two witnesses. I have reviewed the city's report and we agree to the conditions there.
Okay, great. Thank you. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you were calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
No one from the public wishing to speak. I will close.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Francisco, do you want to add anything?
Staff doesn't have any other comments to add on, just staff recommends approval with conditions outlined in my staff memo that's on the data portal.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two two dash one six eight. It's presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
A motion of approval, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Looks good to me. Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Height's testimony. I don't think there's any detriment to the master plan or the redevelopment plan. I think the positive criteria definitely outweigh the negatives. So with that, I'm gonna vote aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, let's move on to item eleven. It's case P two two dash two one three is an administrative amendment for eight twenty four to eight twenty six Pavonia Avenue.
Okay, um, as we wait for Stephen Joseph to join us among the panelists, I just am gonna announce that I received word from Mr. Harrington. They will be carrying item twenty six, address is three three seven Johnson Avenue. So that's with preservation of notice.
Okay, so we're gonna carry case P two two dash one six four is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variants for three thirty seven Johnson Avenue. Once again, this is preserving the notice. So if you're here for that application tonight, you will not receive new notice. This is your notice. So we're carrying that to a date certain of June thirteenth, our next regularly scheduled meeting.
All right, and I'm I'm just waiting for Stephen Joseph to accept his promotion. Okay, there we go.
Sorry about that. There was a delay there.
No problem, counsel. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. So we do have Ahmed from JMA as our architect. But it in Samuel Bellamy, wonderful. Stephen Joseph of Cassano Quigley Trami for the applicant. I do want to confirm notices. I did email Cameron right before this started. I noticed on the portal that the, this is an amendment, the notice package for the original application back in twenty twenty two was uploaded for some reason. I I did email Cameron the notice that we originally noticed for March twenty first, I believe.
Counsel, I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application of eight twenty four and eight twenty six Pavonia Avenue. I do note that this is the notice identifying March twenty first, twenty twenty three as the meeting date. And I agree that it was carried multiple times through this evening. Counsel, I am just a little confused about the nature of the application. Obviously, it's an administrative amendment. But in reading the description and reading the notice, are all the variances remaining intact? But we're essentially changing it to a new construction?
So the rear yard setback variance is changing slightly. That that is getting that, as you'll see in the plans, the rear yard setback is is changing because we're not keeping the existing building anymore. But the front yard setback is not remaining the same.
Okay, so then we're gonna have to go through that test.
And we will be as brief as as possible about that, but.
All right, counsel, let's mark the notices A one. Purpose is the record. And then, obviously, as is customary or practice, anything that's not been submitted and being used as an exhibit tonight, we can mark it's A two, et cetera, et cetera. And with that, I will stop talking.
Wonderful. All right. All right. Thank you, everybody. So this is this application was originally approved in twenty twenty two. It involves a consolidation of two lots with two existing structures on it into one lot to construct a new building. Those existing structures were found to be historically significant in some way. After we got approved, then we started doing our our demolition and and got into the building. There was some significant damage found to these buildings. Ahmed will tell you about that as we go through this. And working with historic with Maggie, we came to the conclusion that we're not gonna, there's no way for us to save these buildings. So we revised the plans, had those plans reviewed by historic. I believe we have a memo and support. And had to change the 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 application. The variance for lot area remains exactly the same. The variance for the rear yard setback does change as part of this application. And I think it's much easier to visualize. So let's get Ahmed's form in and we'll take a walk through the plans.
Hey, man, do you swear any testimony you get tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state spell your name, please?
Sure, it's Ahmed Amara, A H M E D, last name E M A R A.
Thank you.
Good evening. Always a pleasure.
Thank you.
You were the original architect of record on this?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and your license is current tonight?
It is until July, then renew it.
Excellent. That's good to hear. Get on that. Okay, you're qualified.
I'm sorry, was it just me or?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll start with you. We'll get to Mr. Bellamy.
Got it.
I am having trouble getting on the portal, though. To bring these plans up while you speak. I don't know, is anybody else having that problem?
Let me know I can bring the plans up.
Okay, I got it. Never mind. Apologize.
All right, go ahead. And is this, this presentation was not previously submitted, correct?
No.
Okay, so this, if you could just give a brief description and we can mark this as as A two.
Sure. So so I'll I'll go through this very briefly. We presented the twenty four Pavonia.
So I'm sorry, I'm sorry, am I? We just need to describe the the exhibit. So it's.
Oh, yes, I have, I, it's, it's, I'll tell you right now. It's twelve slides. The images in here are also in the submission and and renderings and everything that basically we were showing today was already in the plans.
A twelve slide presentation depicting previously submitted materials. Great.
Correct.
And just send that to me so I could get it over to.
I will do that.
So counsel, it's called eight twenty four Pavonia Ave Planning Board Presentation. It's dated April fourth, twenty twenty three. It is twelve slides. And that will be sent over after this hearing. A two, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll I'll go through this. We presented this a while back when we got it approved. I just want to remind you of the location. It is within the walking distance of Jolla Square, about a ten minute walk. These are the two existing buildings today. And we, if you remember, we presented this and and we were hoping we could preserve the two structures and then add on top of them. I'll just go back one slide. What happened, exactly what Stephen was discussing before, which is we went through the approval, the drawings were completed, we submitted to get demo permits and as part of the demo investigation, we had the engineer of record do a few visits, take samples and review the conditions. And after doing this over and over again, it became clear that the building is not structurally stable and will not be able to receive anything on it and actually will not even withstand a structure. When that was brought up to my attention, we brought it up to Stephen's tension as well as Maggie. And the planner at the time, Tim, and I explained to them that I can't definitively, you know, as an architect, agree to anybody being in the building because I don't know what's gonna happen once you start removing floors. And and so we went through a little more investigation after that. And then we gave the, and then we asked for a report. The report was submitted to the Jersey City Building Department. And we received confirmation from them that the the report was sufficient for the city to issue a demo permit for the building. That being said, we went back to the drawing table and we came with a new proposal. We have a new proposal. The site plan is exactly what you were looking at before with a few differences for setbacks, which I'll just go to the next slide. This is just showing the proposed building area. And unit count, unit count didn't change. The building area got slightly smaller. But everything else is pretty intact. And the next slide will clarify things a little bit. So on the left, and I'm gonna leave this up, you know, a little bit, just so it's clear, on the left is what was previously approved. And the right, what's proposed today. So on the left, the existing, the setback in the front was nine feet, nine inches. What we're proposing today is eleven feet, ten inches. So previously, because of the existing building, they had these sort of bay windows or like the brick was coming out basically. So it was further out than most other structures along the street. And what we're doing now is we're taking that line back to match the neighbors to our right and left. The first floor in the rear, while permitted to be a hundred percent coverage, we had left ten feet in the previous approval. Now we are at ten foot six. And and feel free to stop me at any point because I know the the numbers may be a little too much to look at at once, but that's why we put them next to each other. The the said that variances, as Stephen mentioned, they're basically the same exact variances, but if anything, they're actually getting better. So as I mentioned, the front yard went from nine nine to eleven ten. The rear yard went from ten feet to ten six. The coverage, building coverage was previously seventy one percent. Now it's at sixty nine percent. If I keep going, this is the the first floor, which is what we basically were looking at before. The second, the third floor and up, the building is still the same size, but we, as we move the building. I'm sorry, the building got slightly smaller, so but but moved it from the front. Instead of the front having thirteen five right here, it's now eleven ten. And then the rear yard got slightly bigger as well. And then the rear yard got slightly bigger as well, from 15 feet to 16, seven. 13, five in the previously approved, just to be clear. This is due to the existing building. We were setting back above the existing building to differentiate what's new and what's existing. We were no longer doing that. So now we have a continuous facade on the front. This is what's happening in the rear of the building, the rear of the building, that in terms of design, in terms of articulation, it's exactly the same that was presented to this board in the past. The difference now is previously was 10 feet, like I said, now it's 10, six. And then above, instead of 15, it's 16, seven. So there is essentially more area for light and air into the rear of the building. This is what was previously approved on the left. So the existing building with three stories above it, and now this is the the new composition for the new building. These are the materials selected, fiber cement and dark gray stucco. And this is an image of what we are presenting today. Let me know if you have any questions or if you want me to go back to any specific slides.
So Ahmed, going through Maggie O'Neill's report. And there's there's essentially no historic components being restored at this point, right?
No, no, no. She, what was Maggie's discussion with us in the beginning was the she was she was only sort of wanted the 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 cornice to be preserved. And after showing all the information that we showed her, she said, you know, if this building comes down, she doesn't want, she's not making us basically rebuild it or restore anything of it. She said, you know, this was really just about the cornice and as as a as a as history of our firm, she knows that we we work on these projects a lot in Jersey City and we really enjoy this contrast between all the new and we wanted to keep it. But as as a matter of fact, when when we came with this report to her, she said, if it comes down, you don't have to rebuild it. Correct.
Okay, understood. I'm just I'm looking for anything from historic preservation. I don't doubt your testimony in the least, but you know, we do have to dot our i's and cross our t's here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm looking for some kind of report on our data, our data portal from Maggie. Counsel, is there one? There's talk of it in the staff report, but I don't see anything on the portal itself.
See, I do know Maggie issued this.
The the last report I have from Maggie is on January 26, 2022. And it doesn't discuss, you know, anything that we're talking about tonight.
There there is a report dated April 25, 2023. I see I see that addressed to the board and division of the planning staff. I see that in my file. I don't see that on on the portal.
Yeah, I don't see it on the portal, so. Is there any way you could share that? Share the screen and we'll mark that into evidence for us?
Absolutely.
I stopped sharing, Steve.
Okay.
Aside from that, though, while we're doing that, I Ahmed, I have no questions. As always, good design and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I am showing my screen now. You should be able to see the memo. This is a memo prepared by Maggie O'Neill dated April 25, 2023, addressed to the the board and and division of city planning.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, that's exactly what I'm looking for. So Santa, what do you want to mark that A3 or is that do you have a special designation for that?
Well, had we provided it, it would have got the special designation. But since counsel provided, we will mark it as A3. I don't know why it's not on the portal. I'm just trying to read it. Counsel, could you just do me a favor and zoom?
I was gonna say, Stephen, can you zoom in? Because we all have glasses. I still can't see.
That's good.
I shed some light on as to why it's not on the portal. Obviously, Timothy Crayhill is no longer employed by the city. And he deemed this complete way back in early April and scheduled it. So there's your reason.
I have no I have no comment for that, actually. Okay.
So Chairman, I think the memo speaks for itself. It is from Maggie O'Neill. The senior historic preservation is special. It is dated April 25, 2023. It has been marked as A3 for purposes of record. And.
And and for, I guess, for just for the verbal record, the report says that it's clear the facade is unable to be preserved. This is not the outcome that HPC staff anticipated, but the application may proceed without this component, meaning the historic preservation.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Yeah, that's exactly what I was looking for. So yeah, those are my only questions. Anybody else? Any questions for Mr. Ammar?
No.
Okay, thank you, Ahmed. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We we do have Sam Bellamy here. The the rear yard variance or in this zone, it's the distance from the right of way has changed. It is become closer to compliant, but because the variance did change, you need some brief testimony on it.
Okay.
So let's get Sam sworn in.
Hey, Sam, I swear in. Do you swear any testimony you get tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I don't think I heard you there, Mr. Bellamy.
Great, thanks. And if you could just state and spell your name, please.
Sure. Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Bellamy, good evening. We've qualified you as well in the past. Are you the planner of record on this project originally?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. And your license is current tonight?
Yes, current and in good standing.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified. Congratulations and take it away.
Great. So I'll just focus on the one change as Mr. Joseph and Mr. Amara mentioned. The rear yard projection from the front right of way is actually reducing. So we're going from what was previously approved at 85 feet projected from the right of way down to 83.4 feet. That's a reduction of one feet, seven and a half inches. So again, that is closer to conformance with the maximum 75, 70 feet from right of way that's permitted here. Part of the reasoning for that that project, projection from the right of way was that we were maintaining the historic building facade, which was also the predominant front yard setback on the block. Obviously, going from the adaptive reuse to now completely new construction, we're no longer maintaining the historic facade, but we are still maintaining the predominant front yard setback along this block. So it's actually the front yard setbacks increasing due to the reduction of the bay window. So we're going from nine feet, nine and a half inches to 11 feet, 10 inches. That's directly in line with the two adjacent buildings. So with that, we are still proposing a front yard landscaping. We're removing those existing parking spaces and curb cuts. So we are in line with the block and still promoting a desirable visual environment along this area. And I do think that this is still a better design approach, stepping back, setting back the building from the streetscape, aligning it with adjacent buildings and still providing for amassing that's in line with the 70 foot that's permitted in in this zone. With regards to my original testimony, I do believe that the setbacks do maintain adequate light air and open space. Obviously, by increasing the setbacks slightly, we continue to do so and actually increase it slightly above the ground floor. The the step back is slightly also increased about one and a half feet. So that's another improvement of this project and we're bringing that closer into performance with the with the zone. Again, we're continuing to advance several of the purposes of municipal land you saw. Again, as Mr. Amara walked the board through, this is close to the Journal Square Transportation Center. And there's a permitted use, so we're continuing to guide the appropriate use, development of the property. We're also maintaining an appropriate population density. Then with the improvements, slight improvements of the the setbacks, we provide for adequate light air and open space consistent with purpose C. Consistent with my original testimony, I don't see any substantial detriment to the general welfare here. Again, I think this is an improved design, allowing for the front yard landscaping, providing for a setback that's that's consistent with the block. And there's no substantial detriment to the general welfare. And likewise, no substantial impairment to the tenant purpose of the zone planner zoning ordinance. Bring the the original approvals into closer conformance with what the zoning calls for is in line with the redevelopment plan. And we continue to promote several of the objectives and purpose of both the redevelopment plan and the master plan. So with that, I do think this site plan amendment does meet the C2 criteria where the benefits was substantially outweigh the detriments and there's no substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare or impairment to the the zone planner zoning ordinance. So with that, I do think this deviation can be granted.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. I have no questions for this witness. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate your time.
That that concludes our direct testimony. If we could just stop sharing the screen.
All right. Thank you, counsel. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you are calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
Chairman, seeing no one from the public wishing to speak, I move to close.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Cam, I'm assuming you're handling this?
Yes, so speaking on behalf of the planning department and I we will vouch for the testimony given by my, not the testimony, the professional opinion by our, my former colleague Timothy Crayhill to deem this complete, schedule it and not just a colleague, also a crony. We we all missed him. But Tim deemed this complete and he found it to be in agree, in agreement with Mr. Bellamy's testimony regarding the variances that it does not have a substantial impact on the zoned plan or any detriment to the public's general health, welfare and well-being. Nor does it have any negative impact on the master plan. And having said that, staff ultimately recommends approval with conditions. Now, I hate to do this. This will be the first time planning staff has had to do this in, I want to say, maybe four years, but I'm gonna have to read those conditions into the record. So if you don't mind me, there's gonna be five conditions. So, Mr. Joseph, at any point, if there's any condition you don't agree with, just stop me, okay?
Sure.
All right, so.
Go ahead.
First condition, all testimony given by the applicant and their expert witnesses in accordance with this application shall be binding. Second condition, all material and color selection shall be shown on the final plans. No changes to the facade and site design, including materials, as well as any changes that may be required by the construction code officials shall be permitted without consultation and approval by planning staff. Third condition, all street trees and landscaping shall be installed prior to an issuance of certificate of occupancy. Four, the architect, architectural firm of record shall submit a signed and sealed affidavit confirming that the building was constructed as approved prior to an issuance of certificate of occupancy. Fifth, condition, all comments provided by Jersey City Review Agents, if any, shall be addressed prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Are those conditions acceptable, Mr. Joseph?
I believe they are the standard conditions. I was waiting for something unexpected, but they are acceptable.
Yeah. But unfortunately, yeah, Tim left without leaving us one of his staff reports, so we had to put it in the record. So yeah, with those conditions, planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Ken. We appreciate it. Cam, one question for you, actually.
Okay.
In staff comments, we always say certificate of occupancy. And I've talked about this in the past and it's probably back those four years that you're talking about. I I've asked for a temporary certificate of occupancy.
Okay, yeah. So Stephen, if you don't mind, we'll change that language in the conditions wherever certificate of occupancy is mentioned, we're gonna change that to TCO.
I I don't see any issue with that. I mean, you're nodding your head. It's just that I assume there's no issue with the engineering comments prior to TCO.
There shouldn't be, and I understand the chairman's point also.
Okay, wonderful. That's acceptable.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it's just, you know, I've seen a number of projects operate under a TCO before the final COs are given and and I think, you know, the landscaping especially is is of utmost importance. So I think that should always be under a TCO as opposed to just the general CEO. So thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P22-213 as presented to our board tonight.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I like the project. I liked the project the first time. I think it's a good design. I agree with Mr. Bellamy's testimony. I think there's no detriment to the master plan or the zone plan, so my vote is aye.
Motion carries on in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Mike, do you want to get a break in? It's 7:06.
I think it's great timing. Thank you.
Perfect, perfect timing. All right, let's take 10, everybody. We'll be, I'm sorry, we'll be back at 7:16. Perfect, perfect timing. All right, let's take ten, everybody. We'll be, uh, I'm sorry, we'll be back at seven sixteen. Okay, let's come to order again, everybody, please. All right, let's move on to item thirteen is case P two two dash one one five is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances. Four three eighty one route four forty.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, for the record, uh, Tom Lean of Connell Foley, this is a notice case. It's been carried out multiple times. I would just, uh, ask the council confirm that they've received my affidavit.
And the council, I have received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application three eighty one route four forty. Uh, the notice that I've been provided has. A cover date of April. Showing the meeting for April fourth, twenty twenty three. I note that the matter has been carried. Through this evening with no further notice. We can mark it as A one for the record.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, we're very excited to be here this evening. Uh, this is a proposal for a new Target store. Uh, located on Route four forty. It will be replacing the former Kmart. It is part of the Stadium Plaza Shopping Mall. Um, and as a matter of fact, there will be a sister application after this. Both of these applications are really about the, uh, the upgrading and the appro, uh, the improvements. To the Stadium Plaza Shopping, uh, Center, which will be a, um, a, a great resource for, uh, the west side of Jersey City. Um, the application, uh, is for a almost a hundred and twenty thousand square foot, uh, store. It's almost on an acre of property. Uh, there will be five hundred and fifteen, uh, parking spaces serving the store. Um, we do have a number of deviations, almost all, excuse me, variances, um, which are almost exclusively related to the size of the property. And, um, the specifications that would relate to a store of this size. Um, I do have a number of witnesses this evening, though I do believe the most important testimony is gonna come from our civil engineers. Uh, I have Matt Kunsman, uh, who will be testifying from, uh, Bowler. Uh, I have an architect, Jeffrey Butcher, who will just briefly run through the specifications of the store. I have an archi, I, I have a planner, prof, uh, professional planner, uh, Justin Osceolo. And I also have, uh, traffic. If the board has any questions, uh, obviously this is a state road, so there'll be a lot of traffic. Board has any questions, we do have somebody to testify as to that. And I also have a representative from Target who can, uh, answer any questions related to operation. So with that, I would, uh, ask that, uh, Matt Kunsman come up and, uh, go through the, uh, the proposed, uh, civil plans.
Um, Tom, excuse me, who was the traffic engineer and who was the target specialist?
Sure, it's Rihanna Kirkoff is the, uh, traffic.
Okay.
Engineer and Allison Matherne is from Target.
Super. Okay, thank you.
All right, Matt, I'll swear in if you raise your right hand. You sure any testimony you give today is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, it's, uh, Matthew Kunsman. Uh, my last name is spelled K U N S M A N. Thank you.
Mr. Kunsman, good evening. I don't believe we've qualified you, have we?
Uh, no, not from this board.
Okay, so if you could just go through your background, your, uh. Education and your licensing, please.
Sure, so I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Syracuse University. I'm employed at Bowler Engineering, which is located at thirty Independence Boulevard in Warren, New Jersey. I have a professional engineering license in New Jersey, which is in good standing. And I've also been accepted as an expert witness in front of various zoning and planning boards in the state.
Okay, thank you, sir, but, uh, we're the most important, so, uh, you're qualified here as well.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Um, so first, I'm gonna introduce an exhibit. So I'm gonna share my screen. All right, so let me know if you can see my screen.
And, uh, Mr. Mr. Kunsman, is this part of the civil set that was provided to the city as part of our application?
Uh, no, it is not.
Okay, so we'll have to mark this as an exhibit.
All right, so this is gonna be A one.
This is gonna be A two, but council, why don't we identify it? Tell us how many sheets it is, last date revised. And the entire slideshow will be A two.
Okay. All right, so I actually have two exhibits, um, two separate, um, packages, I guess, or, uh, PDFs. So the first one's gonna be A two, which is aerial exhibit prepared by Bowler dated May twenty third, twenty twenty three. Do you want me to also introduce my second exhibit? Cause this is, it's part of a different PDF or is that all gonna be A two?
You can make the second exhibit A three then.
Okay, great. All right, so exhibit A two, again, is aerial exhibit. North is to the right side of the page, just for your reference. So the property is known as four zero one and three eight one route four forty. Uh, block two six one zero two and lots two and lot three. Uh, the total area of the lot is nineteen acres and has frontage. On, uh, Kellogg Street and also, uh, State Highway Route, uh, four forty. The property is also within, uh, the waterfront plan development zone. Uh, describing some of the surrounding uses, so to the north, uh, which is on the right side of the page again, is Kellogg Street and beyond that is the. Bayfront One redevelopment plan area, which is, uh. Currently undeveloped or vacant. Uh, to the east, which is the bottom of the page, is State Highway forty. And, uh, some heavy commercial beyond that. To the south is the WPD zone with the Planet Fitness and some other residential uses beyond that. And to the west of the site is residential with the Hackensack River beyond that. So, uh, describing the existing, uh, the site, the site is shown in the center of the page in yellow. Uh, lot two is the northern lot in the. As part of the property, um, it consists of, uh, strip retail, a Wendy's restaurant. And it's currently occupied as well by an Acme supermarket. And then lot three, which is the southern lot of this development. It was the former Kmart, which is now currently vacant. And there's also a Capital One Bank, um. On the southeastern portion of the lot as well. Uh, the current Capital One Bank has or doesn't comply with the current zoning. Uh, for front yard setback, so the current setback for that. Uh, structure is fifty seven point one feet. Uh, which we're actually going to match our proposed conditions, which I'll show in a little bit. Um, the total impervious coverage on the site in existing conditions is eighty eight point seven percent. And total building coverage is twenty one point three percent. Access to the site and existing conditions, there are, uh, there is a right in, right out driveway. Located, um, on the northern portion of lot three. Uh, from Route forty or four forty, and there's also an ingress driveway located on the southern portion of the fringe of Route four forty, uh. Which is near the current bank. There's also two full movement driveways along Kellogg Street as well. There is existing sidewalk that front it's, uh, that exists on. The fringes on Kellogg Street and also forty as well. Um, the site is within a flood hazard area, um, as defined by the NJDUP. So the site is subject to flooding from the Newark Bay. We actually received a, uh, verification and also individual permit for our proposed development. So I'll get into that a little bit as well. And the site is generally flat and ranges in topography from elevation eight to eleven. On site. So with that, I'm gonna introduce my next exhibit. This is gonna be exhibit A three. And this is a overall site layout plan exhibit prepared by Bowler, day May twenty third, twenty twenty three. Again, north is to the right side of the page, same orientation as the prior exhibit. So. We are proposing improvements mostly on, uh, lot three, which is the southern lot. So this exhibit that I have in front of you is a colorized, uh, rendering of the site plan, uh. Uh, that was submitted as part of our application. It also has the landscaping superimposed. And an, an aerial background for the remainder of the development and the surrounding uses, just for your reference. So as I was saying, uh, lot three is southern portion or the southern lot, we are proposing to demolish, uh, the existing. Retail facility that was vacant from the Kmart and we're also, uh. Proposing to demolish, uh, the bank as well. With that, we are proposing a retail store at Target, which is a hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred ninety seven square feet. In floor, uh, floor area, and we are also proposing. A quick service restaurant building in the front of the, along the fringe Route four forty, which is six thousand forty eight square feet. With this application, we are, you know, matching. Or tying into the development of part of the, the plaza and trying to maintain some of the existing features on lot two, so. There were a lot of constraints, um, as part of this proposed development, so with that, we had to request some variances. Um, we are compliant with the setback for the front yard setback for the target, the, and the perimeter setbacks for the target. However, we are requesting a variance for the front yard of fifty seven point one feet. For this, uh, QSR or a quick service restaurant to the front yard. And that's to the canopy structure and not to the actual building. Um, again, this building is, um. Is a preliminary, we're going for preliminary approval just for the use and also. Uh, for the setback, um, final design of that restaurant would have to be come back for under future application. However, um. You know, for the target, we are going in for final, so, and that does comply with all the setbacks as well.
Uh, I, I just wanna stop you there for one second. Uh, the, the actual retail pad is gonna be dealt with in a separate application for preliminary. That's actually not before the board this evening. We're just, we're calling it out on these plans, but we're not asking for them to over this evening.
All right, sorry about that. And additionally, we are requesting a, uh, variance for the storefront windows along, um. The front or storefront windows, um, as part of the, the ordinance. Only six percent of the, the frontage has, uh, has that windows. Um, so with the proposed target, it does not comply with that requirement. Um, the architect will provide for the testimony on this and describe some of those features. I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. And additionally, uh, as part of, you know, branding and things of that nature, we are proposing some signage. Uh, which requires variances as well, which the architect will get into. So just describing some of the, the site features and how we designed the site, so. We're actually not proposing any changes to how we access the site, so we're gonna be maintaining. Uh, the right in, right out driveway on Route four forty and also the ingress driveway on Route four forty as well. Uh, we have applied to the NG DOT and we're, um, having communicating back and forth. And just wrapping up some last comments, which our traffic engineer can testify to as well. And we're also maintaining the existing driveways on Kellogg Street, so there's two full movement driveways. Um, on each side of, uh, the strip retail. So one of the big differences um, from the existing conditions of what the site currently looks like to propose um, is the power orienting the parking stalls on the site. So currently the stalls are angled, so there's one way driveways that circulate the site, so if you don't find a parking stall, you have to drive all the way down the drive aisle and circle back around. Or people cut through, uh, cause they don't wanna drive all the way down at, you know, thirty parking spaces or whatever it is. Um, so now we are actually proposing uh, perpendicular parking spaces, which have um which you can go each way and um, you can travel each direction in that drive aisle. So um, we're, we're not touching anything for the lot two, the parking spaces, we're just uh, modifying the parking for a lot three. So we are proposing a total of um, five hundred eighteen parking stalls. Twenty four of which um, on the southern side of the site will have uh, customer pickup. So those are spaces that are designated for people that placed an online order, they can park in these stalls and then either uh, text to say that they're here and then the work can be brought out to them, or they can go inside the store and pick up their order that they placed online. And then we also have um, twenty two make ready E V parking stalls located on the southern side. And we also have ADA parking located in the center of the site. Um, which complies with the ADA standards. What these uh, the parking configurations and the constraints of the existing site, we do have to request two variances. One of which is uh, that no more than sixty percent of the front yard can be parking between the front building and the, the front property line. Um, so as you can see, the majority of the parking that we're proposing is looking in front of the target. And we have to request a variance. And also there's a separate uh, zoning requirement, which requires or that, that states that no parking can be between the building and the street, so we also have a variance for that as well. However, you know, we are making improvements to um from the existing conditions by green perpendicular parking stalls, create some more efficient design, a better experience and also um route four forty is not a, a street that, you know, many people are gonna be walking along. It's more of a destination location and uh, it makes sense to have the parking in front of the building in this kind of application. Uh, additionally, we do have a room, if pedestrian does wanna come to the site for either by bike or they can also walk, we do have sidewalks proposed uh, throughout the site that connects to the, the right away, and we also have uh, twenty seven outdoor bike spaces and seven indoor bike racks uh, proposed, which is compliant with the code as well. As part of Target's um, operations and their, uh, you know, there are many facilities that they have uh, throughout the country. Um, we do, are requesting a variance for the number of loading spaces required, the township code or city code requires eight loading spaces and we're proposing three, and this is just what caught our target needs uh, for uh, their development. Moving on to uh, utilities, so we are proposing gas, uh, water and sanitary connections and also electric. Uh, we have been, we have applied to um, the Jersey City M U A. And we are working through some minor comments um, for water and sanitary sewer connections. And moving on to stormwater, uh, we have as I said before, received an NJDP flood hazard permit, individual permit for the project, so they have approved our stormwater design. But with that, um we are increasing the building coverage from existing conditions. And we're decreasing the impervious coverage for the whole entire lot, so that includes parking and the building uh, square footage from existing additions, so with that, you're actually decreasing motor vehicle surfaces by over forty five thousand square feet, so over an acre of motor vehicle surfaces, so areas that, you know, um cars can drive over and uh, and trip, gas, oil, whatever it is. That's gonna be clean water, so forty five thousand square feet more of clean water is proposed for this project. Um, couple more things that we can go through, so lighting, so uh, we are proposing uh, new LED light fixtures that um, for, for this parking facility. Um, we are requesting a variance for the mounting height on the poles. Um, the maximum permitted is twenty five feet, however, proposing uh, forty foot mounted um lights on the poles. Um, and that's because, you know, for practicality reasons, the light a huge parking lot like this, it makes sense to have taller light fixtures that can uh, throw light a little bit further. But it still complies a hundred percent with the rest of the um, lighting requirements for foot candles and the men and max average requirements um, throughout the parking area. And additionally, uh, after reviewing the light fixtures that are existing on site currently. Um, they are also, the existing lights are taller than the existing building. Um, so we feel that proposing light fixtures that are taller, it still makes sense and is consistent to what's there existing. And then lastly, um, landscaping, so we are proposing, you know, a pretty substantial landscape package for this um application, we have a total of six hundred thirty one plantings uh, with uh, ten different species of plants. You know, forty eight shade trees, eight ornamental trees um, throughout the project, so you can see all the green space that is proposed. However, based on uh, the green area ratio requirement that the city requires, uh, we do have to request a variance for um, the amount of green space proposed, um, which is thirty six thousand three hundred ninety four square feet. Where a hundred and six thousand one hundred four square feet is required. But um, the site in existing conditions, as I said before, would not comply with this requirement, and we're also um, decreasing impervious coverage quite significantly for this project. So that therefore we feel it's justified to have uh, or to request that variance um, for the green area ratio. So with that, I know I was very quick, um, that's all I have, I believe, for direct.
Thank you very much. Yeah, if there are any questions from the board?
Alright, thank you, council. Uh, Mr. Kunsman, just a uh, couple of quick questions, um. The changeover from angled parking versus head in, back out or back in, head out. Um, what's the, do you have any idea what the difference in the number of spots that are?
Sure, so.
Or, or are viable?
Oh, I mean, I, I don't have a calculation if I was to, you know, um the stripe uh, angled parking for the target, but I can tell you what's there existing versus what's there proposed, so existing um skip very, bear with me. One might be in this table, I thought I had it written down, sorry. There's five hundred four parking stalls existing, there's five hundred eighteen proposed, so we're gaining fourteen parking spaces.
Interesting, okay, I, I would think angled parking uh, gave more spaces, but very interesting, um. And then I do see there's pedestrian walkways through the lot.
That's correct, so we do have a few uh, walkways proposed, so um we do have uh, you know, in center between the two driveways, there is a connection from the right away sidewalk uh, that can connect through the center, uh, through the ADA spaces and then across to the retail. We also do have a crosswalk that gets to the uh, the drop off or the customer pickup area. And then we also have uh, another sidewalk if the lot two were to connect to um, that sidewalk as well, so we, we do have I guess, three um, dedicated sidewalks that um like, you know, connect to the parking areas. There's really like three parking, I guess, main parking areas for the facility, so you kinda can see that there's like landscaping that surrounds like this parking area, for instance. And then uh, there's some landscape that surrounds these two parking areas and then this parking area on the right or on the northern side, it's kind of bound, so it makes sense to have these three uh, sidewalks proposed.
And um, there's no pedestrian access, let's say, uh, in the site currently, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I guess my um, you know, my only concern with going to a a two-way parking scenario with, you know, head in, head out spots, um i- is pedestrian access, uh, you know, now you have cars coming from either direction. And shoppers tend to walk down those drive aisles, so you know. I'm happy that there's dedicated pedestrian access, I just hope people use it. Um, so that's, uh, those are my only questions, uh, anybody else? Alright, thank you, Mr. Kunsman.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, next up I have our architect, uh, Jeffrey Butcher.
Hi Jeffrey, I'll swear in. If you can raise your right hand. Do you have any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, can you state and explain your name, please?
Jeffrey Butcher, B U T C H E R.
Thank you.
Mr. Butcher, good evening. I believe we have qualified you, haven't we?
No, I don't think so.
We have not.
Another Jeffrey Butcher architect out there.
Okay, um, so if you could just go through your background, your education and uh, your license.
I'm a, I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, though I'm not the uh, architect of record on this project. Um, I have a bachelor's in architecture from Pennsylvania State University. A master's of architecture and urban design from Harvard University, um, and um, worked at Target uh, on projects like this for some time now.
Okay, and are you licensed in New Jersey or no?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, and that license is current and in good standing tonight?
Yes.
Great, thank you, sir, you are qualified.
And Mr. Butcher, though you are not the architect of record, you have reviewed the plans as, that were submitted to the, the planning board.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, does someone have the rendering or elevations to share? Something that uh
Uh, if you don't have the ability to do that, I can uh, pull them up.
Yeah, if you have the exterior rendering, that would be great.
Uh, let me just quickly find them on the I might just be able to only pull up the architectural plans, I don't know if I have the ability to pull up the rendering.
I see, I have, I have the rendering here, actually.
Okay, if you have the ability to uh, share your screen.
Yeah, I feel like it's the best way to kind of discuss the project.
Sure.
Okay. Everyone see that?
We can, yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, so uh, I guess as is our approach to all new Target store designs. Um, this is in a timeless, modern style. We use uh, clean lines and simple forms in combination with durable materials and colors that enhance the quality of the pedestrian experience. We see this project as an opportunity to breathe new life into an old building by reevaluating the building components used throughout. Uh, there is a hierarchy of materials meant to emphasize the role the building plays at different scales. Uh, up close, the lower portion of the building is composed of warmer, more inviting materials. Fiber cement panels with the appearance of wood add texture while warm grays and beiges add additional neutral background tone to the precast concrete. Higher up on the facade, the colors become more vibrant, red to be seen from route four forty, uh, and are an indicator of the Target brand. We've added glazing to the front of store beyond what we might normally do. Uh, by creating larger glazed openings in the facade, more light is allowed in, maintaining a constant connection to the exterior. Uh, this keeps the interior of the store feeling livelier and more vibrant and adds to the appeal of the building from the exterior. Uh, glazing has been placed at the main entrance where you find a Starbucks uh, and other guest services. Glazing has also been introduced on the north side of the facade at the grocery area, giving it an exterior presence while enhancing the shopping experience with views to the exterior. Um, we've also added canopies and a column eight along the main entry to reduce the scale of the building as you enter. Uh, just, this overhead cover is an amenity that makes walking along the sidewalk more comfortable and functional while providing protection from the weather. Uh, lastly, the, the signage um, from south to north. Uh, so on the left side of this image, uh, as the red uh, sort of turns the corner, that's the south side. Um, so let me show a separate image. Whoops. Sorry, one second. So on this elevation, um this is the, the sh- the short south facade, there's a bullseye logo that has no text, seven foot diameter. And then heading north along the facade, we have our drive up logo. These are all internally illuminated signs, uh, this is above the entrance canopy, uh, it's in, it's important for visitors intending to leave, not intending to leave their cars. Uh, the primary target logo uh, and letter set sign meant to be seen from a distance is located on the background above the main entry on the red background above the main entry. Uh, there is an order pickup sign under the pedestrian canopy adjacent to the main entrance. Um, there is a second bullseye logo sign with no text next to the grocery area, talking about. And then finally a C V S uh, pharmacy sign, facing to that, so six signs in total. Um, finally, we think this project will be a wonderful addition to the urban design and landscape of Jersey City and a real benefit to its residents, um, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Butcher, um. There's no uh, deviations with the building massing or anything of that sort?
No.
Okay, being uh, fifty two years old and married for twenty four years, I, I'm familiar with the interior of Targets, so I, I don't know that we need testimony on those. Um, so yeah, I have no questions, anybody else?
No.
Alright, thank you, sir, and that rendering, that rendering that's up right now, that's exactly what I'm talking about with pedestrian access. Everybody there is uh, walking through a drive aisle.
Right.
Alright, thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Uh, finally, as far as my case in chief, I do have Justin Osceolo to uh, testify as to our deviations before he gets up there and just to uh uh, just put it in front of the board, I'm gonna list out all the deviations that we noticed for. Um, there is a front yard setback as it relates to the proposed retail pad, again, that's not in front of the board this evening. However, we are calling out that space on our plans. Uh, there is a uh, variance as it relates to storefront window coverage. Um, the location of the parking stalls being in front of the building, uh, as opposed to uh, surrounding the building. Um, minimum required number of loading spaces, maximum number of permitted signs, maximum permitted area of wall signage. The green area ratio, which our uh, engineer went over, uh, and the maximum permitted uh, height for lighting. We also do have a devia- uh, design waiver as it relates to the number of uh, trees that are required on site. Uh, with all that said, I will ask uh, our planner to come up and testify as to uh, those requested variances.
Alright, thank you, council.
Do you have any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and explain your name, please?
It's Justin Osceolo, yeah, Justin Osceolo, A U C I E L L O.
Thank you.
Mr. Osceolo, good evening, uh, I don't think we've qualified you either in the past, have we?
Uh, I was in front of this board about ten years ago for McDonald's, uh, I I'm not sure if anyone else was on the board at that time, but I would be more than happy to uh, to give my qualifications.
Are we talking about the McDonald's uh, at the um, I'm not sure the street name, but the, the entrance by the Hound Tunnel?
Uh, to, to be honest, you know, since we're on the record, I'm, I'm not stern, so I don't wanna uh, you know, misrepresent myself.
Okay, I, I do remember um, my dog ate part of those plans and I think that was about ten years ago, but uh uh, um, so uh
It was November of twenty twelve, actually, or excuse me, November twenty thirteen, just so you know.
That was the one, that was the one, because I actually just went back at uh, to check emails from, from then and, and I, I recall it was late twenty thirteen.
Okay, that's the one I'm thinking of, I was on the board at the time and my dog did eat your plans, um. So uh, that being said, your license is current tonight as a planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, still.
Thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, so uh, so as Mr. Lean had stated, we do require um, some relief uh, this evening. Uh, I would just, just start by saying that I believe that these variances can be justified under, under C one hardship and and C two. Um, the benefits versus the detriments, um. Our engineer, you know, went through all the variances from an engineering standpoint, but but I'll put them in the context of of the planning standpoint. Uh, first, as Mr. Lean had just stated, for the uh, the front yard setback and and the retail pad, again, um, that is not. That is not uh, part of uh, of this application this evening, um, you know, that will be dealt with uh, at a later time. Number two, for the required uh. A storefront window coverage, uh, you just heard from the architect, uh, even though we do require uh, you know, relief. Um, for that variance, uh, I would say that, you know, the architect covered the fact that. Um, you know, there's, there's larger glazed openings uh, on this building, there's going to be more light. It's going to be more vibrant and it's going to uh, to add to the uh, uh, you know, to the the status and the appeal uh, of the building. So I would say from a, you know, from a planning standpoint, I think it's a better um, you know, design alternative. Of course, uh, as well, because of, you know, big box stores do have, you know, higher ceilings. Um, you know, certainly it makes sense in the context of what's proposed, given um, you know, the improvements over the existing condition, of course, and also the location of the site. Um, the third variance or the second variance uh, is is the parking distribution. Uh, and and the parking uh, that's uh, between the buildings and the street. Um, again, there's really no other way to accommodate parking, given the uh, the existing nature um. Uh, of the site. Uh, but I think, you know, Mr. Kuntzman had cogently explained. That there are uh, significant improvements to the parking for lot three, it's uh, it's more efficient. Um, there, you know, you know, from a safety standpoint, um, pedestrian walkways, uh, uh. Uh, sidewalks and and bike racks, so, so even though, you know, we do require relief. Um, from the ordinance standard, I believe that what's proposed, uh, certainly from a planning standpoint, better uh, design alternative. Than uh, than what's currently on the site uh, today. Uh, the next variance i- is for the, the number of 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 loading spaces. Uh, three loading spaces are proposed where seven are required, uh, the existing condition uh, for the old Kmart has as one loading space. Um, you know, certainly, I think, given the nature of the character of the surrounding area and residential to the rear of the site, I believe uh, three, three loading spaces. Um, you know, they do meet the needs uh, of of Target and it just really makes more sense. To minimize um, you know, light and noise created by loading and unloading to provide the three um. You know, that's required by the user. Uh, the next variance i- is for the number a- and the area of of signage, uh, I believe the architect just just hit on that. Uh, the signage uh, is is appropriate, um, you know, given the type of use that that Target is. Given that the structure itself i- is set back at considerable distance uh, from the two roadways, the need to communicate. Uh, to motorists that the Target is at this location, um, you know, so certainly, a- and I think it's important to also note that. The signage is uh, i- is going to be uh, pleasing to the eye as well, so I think those are all reasons why it's a better design alternative. To propose the number of signs um, that are are posed, um. The next variance i- is for the height of the uh, freestanding lights, uh, again, uh, this is a, you know, bigger shopping center. Uh, it's, it's, it's really incumbent on on the shopping center order to provide for sufficient lighting. Especially for a new use like Target, which we all hope is going to be uh, successful, obviously, i- is a big benefit. Um, you know, to the community, a- as Mr. Kuntzman uh, had stated. Um, the lighting, you know, even though we we do require relief for the height. Uh, it still meets the uh, the the lighting requirements for uh, for foot candles and um, uh, the the min and max uh, of lighting throughout the parking area. Uh, and lastly, variance for the uh, the the green area ratio and uh, and and street trees, so I believe the uh, the street trees is a waiver. Um, but I would say um, for for green area ratio, again, um, this is a a user. That is seeking to come onto the site, dealing with uh, the the conditions that is, that exist on the site, working within those confines. Uh, but as Mr. Kuntzman had testified, uh, there are going to be hundreds of plantings on the site. I think from a planning standpoint, what's important to note as well is a is a decrease in uh, the coverage um, uh, for uh, for pervious. Um, believe as Mr. Kuntzman had testified, uh, there's uh, there's over an acre uh, less than of a vehicle surface, of vehicle surfaces than what's currently on the site. Um, so I think, you know, even though the fact that we do require a variance for the green area ratio and a waiver for the number of street trees, I believe what's proposed is a better um. Design alternative than what currently uh, exists on the site. So those are the 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 technical justifications of the variance, I would just like to sum up and close up. By going into positive and negative criteria, I believe that uh, that all these variances uh, will certainly uh, advance purposes of zoning from the M L U L. Certainly, uh, criteria A, uh, general welfare, I I think it, it goes without saying, but I think I've already s- uh, said it. That this is going to be an application that's going to be a substantial benefit um, to the community, but I think uh, site-specific. Um, you know, many improvements uh, over the the current condition of the site, so I think that's a, that's a big benefit. Uh, criteria G, um, sufficient space on the site, um, certainly, um, even though. We do require, um, you know, some variances, I would say on bar- uh, on balance, these are not uh, substantial variances. I believe the, this is a kind of a lesson in in mitigation uh, or uh, improvement over the 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 uh, the current condition of the site. So I think um, that there's more than sufficient space to accommodate this use, uh, and um, um, and the visual environment. Uh, certainly desirable, which is criteria I, uh, you heard from our architect, I think the architect, you know, um, went through the slides to show. Uh, what's proposed from the design perspective, uh, a- and also the uh, the the improvements. Uh, to the functionality of the site as well, part and parcel to the Target building itself, I think, you know, those are all um. Purposes of zoning that are are going to be advanced uh, with this application, and lastly, for the negative criteria. Uh, no substantial detriment to the public good. Certainly, uh, this is going to be uh, a use that's going to be, uh, in my opinion, my professional opinion. Uh, substantially beneficial to the community, um, there, there is a uh, significant amount of mitigation. Um, that's proposed from the existing condition uh, on the site, um, so certainly, I don't see any of these variances rising to the level. Of placing a substantial detriment um. Uh, to the public good, and lastly, uh, there's no impairment to to the zone plan, the zoning ordinance, uh, this is a uh. Permitted use in the zone, this is the type of use uh, uh, or um, you know, redevelopment of the site. That the the waterfront zone uh, seeks to promote, uh, so certainly, from that perspective. Uh, no substantial detriment to to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Uh, that concludes my testimony.
Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate it, uh, I have no questions, anybody else?
No.
No.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, that is our case in chief, as I said, I do have a traffic expert and I do have a, someone from Target to answer any questions about operations. But other than that, we have no further testimony to provide.
Okay, thank you, counsel, um, I don't think we need that testimony, uh, but we'll reserve the right to. To bring them up, um, there is one uh, condition that I usually ask of any retail. Uh, establishment that the. Any lighted signage uh, would only be operational during uh, business hours. So I don't have that answer right now, but uh, we can open it up for public, uh. We can take it and we can take that up later.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, let's open it up for a public comment, if anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application. Please raise your hands, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Mr. Chair, I see no public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and second, public is closed, uh, Cam, you're handling this for ten?
Yep, um, so our dearly beloved and most recently departed uh, principal planner Timothy Crayhill. Uh, did. Create a planning staff memo, which I'm going to share on my screen. Um, I'm going to do that first and we will have to mark this into evidence, um, I don't know what exhibit we're up to right now.
A four, I think we're up to.
Yes.
Unless, I thought has a different uh, designation here.
So here is Mr. Crayhill's report. Um, I'm just going to scroll to the staff conditions. Excuse me, um. And I believe, Mr. Lean, you have, you are in receipt of this report and you have agreed to the conditions therein. Um, can you confirm that for the board, please?
Yes, I can, I have reviewed and we can agree to the conditions.
Okay, um, the only testimony I'm going to add is that um, planning staff agrees with the professional planner testimony provided by the applicant here. Um, in regards to the variances and planning staff agrees with uh, their uh, conclusion that this does not have. Any negative impact on the public's general health, welfare, well-being, nor does it. Uh, in any way jeopardize the master plan, its goals and objectives, or the zoned plans. Um, W P D uh, zone uh, of goals and objectives, and um, just to add a little uh. Further anecdotal um. Comments, um, I do know that the uh, councilwoman is um. Excited for this new development and the community has had uh, favorable uh, reviews of the incorporation of Target in their neighborhood, so. Make of that what you want, and with that, planning staff recommends approval.
All right, thanks, Cam. Mr. Lean, what about that uh, condition then?
That, that is acceptable to us, um, a- as I said, there's going to be a sister application to this that deals also with signage. And I think it's just going to be a condition that's going to be for the entirety of Stadium Plaza, so it it is acceptable.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve case P two two dash one one five is presented to the board tonight.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, I want to give thanks to this group for bringing additional uh, Target to the west side of. Jersey City and giving our chairman and his beloved uh. A variety of shopping experiences and break of monotony. Having said that, pardon the pun, I think you've hit the target, so I vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
I love Target, I say aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
I just want to say we're excited to have Target at this end of Jersey City, um. And to have a variety of different stores that's coming along the um, Stadium Plaza there, I vote aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I agree, uh, I think this is a good addition to uh, the Route forty, four forty corridor, um. Cam summed it up well for us, uh, I agree with his testimony as well as uh, the planner. Uh, that these uh. Deviations don't create a detriment to the public good and they're in line with the master plan, so uh, I am going to vote aye.
Motion passes all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, Cam, I do have the uh, picture of my dog eating those McDonald's plans, if you need to enter that into the record. November twenty twelve. Uh, okay, let's move on to item fourteen, this case P two two dash one nine six is a minor site plan with C variances. Uh, for four oh one Route four forty.
Okay, um, but between the uh. Presentations, I do have an announcement, I received word from uh, Attorney Harrington and. He has uh, told me that his client has consented to carry uh, item twenty-nine on the agenda. Case P twenty-two dash one seven five, address to seventy-four to seventy-six stairs Avenue. Um, they have requested carry with preservation of notice to June thirteen.
Okay, thanks, Cam, we appreciate it. And uh, David, I know, uh, we talked earlier about it, uh, Commissioner Cruz might have to leave a little bit earlier than usual tonight, maybe before the uh. Ten o'clock hour, uh, David, just give us notice when you need to to bail out. Uh, we are going to need your vote on uh, memorialization of resolutions, so uh.
Yes, sir.
Well, we'll need to.
I'm hanging on, I'm hanging on, I'm here for life with you.
All right, thanks, buddy. I don't plan on being here for life, but I appreciate that sentiment.
I lo- as long as back the Gonzala keeps me alive, I'm okay.
All right, Mr. Lean, the floor is yours, sir, we called your application.
Yes, uh, again, for the record, uh, Tom Lead of Connell Foley, as I said, this is a sister application to the Target. And it relates to the existing storefronts that are in Stadium Plaza, uh, this is an application for a signage package. Um, there are twelve conforming facade signs that will be replacing those that currently exist. Uh, on the storefronts in Stadium Plaza, however, we are asking for um, variances related to. A freestanding sign, uh, pylon sign that will be replacing the one that currently exists on the site. Pylon signs are not actually permitted uh, under the um, uh, waterfront uh, uh, district and. Um, we're going to just replace the one that's there with a modern sign, and we're also going to be asking for um. Relief to allow these signs to be illuminated, so they can be seen from four forty as people are going uh, down. Um, I do have two witnesses, I believe the only one I'm going to call in chief is Brian Tavers. Uh, who is from our signage company, however, I do have an architect, Kevin Bolger, who can uh, come up to give context if there are any further questions. About how this, these signs will be uh, deployed throughout um, the uh, the Stadium Plaza shopping mall.
And Chairman, while we have those gentlemen brought up.
Yes.
I am receipt of the affidavit of notice proof of mailing with respect to the application at four oh one Route four forty. It was noticed for the April fourth meeting and carried through. This evening's meeting, it does appear to be in order, we can mark it as a for the record.
All right, thank you, counsel.
And so I'll just swear, Mr. Travers here?
Yes.
All right, great, uh, if you could just raise your hand, sir. Do you want any testimony you get tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state, spell your name, please?
Uh, Brian Travers, T R A V E R S.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Travers, good evening, have we qualified you in the past, I don't recall?
I, I don't believe so.
Okay, if you could, just go over your uh, professional background, your uh, education and your licensing for us.
Yes, um, I've been in the sign business for forty-four years, um, the last thirty-three years as the field supervisor at Butler Sign Company. Which is a uh, a top sign company in the northeast, uh, fabricating, designing and installing custom electric signs. Um, I've been. Qualified as a sign expert in probably over forty municipalities in New Jersey, New York, Connecticut and Pennsylvania.
Okay, thank you, sir, and uh, as with uh, Mr. Kuntzman earlier, um, this board is the most important in the country, so uh. When you go to those other municipalities, just tell them J C qualified you and uh, congratulations.
Uh, Mr. Travers, I'm going to ask you to run through the signage package that we uh, sent to the city, I I know when we were, we were communicating earlier, you said. Uh, you might be able to share your screen, is that?
I, I can, I don't have that capability, um, I don't know, you, you have the plans for the.
Um, I have the ability, um, Cam, I'm going to quickly sign off of this account, I'm going to hop onto my laptop. Would you uh, mind promoting me there again, so I can share my screen?
Or, or how about I just share the plans, I mean, are they plans I have?
Uh, they would be the ones that were on, um, uh, they are currently on the portal. Uh, the only issue is, I think that they might be divided up into several pages as opposed to. Just one compiled set.
That is true, yeah, they are.
Yeah.
You know what, um, what I would say to you, Cam, is is that all of the signage is under a uh, standard package, so if you see one, you're going to be. Showing what the other storefronts are going to look like, so if you could just pull up one, I think uh, Mr. Travers can probably testify as to that.
Okay, yeah, I'll just share my screen and you know what, we'll, we'll do the best that we can and. As, as they, you know, come up, which, which signage package do you want me to start with?
Uh, Mr. Travers, is there one that's um, better than the others, uh, to?
They're, they're all. They're all pretty much the same. If you can just go to any of the, uh, the, the ones that the Electric City's fine, Polmby's fine. Yeah, yeah.
This sounds interesting, a Cold Stone and a Polmby. That's interesting.
Okay, so as you can see, they're similar to the signs that were existing. It's just that they're obviously new. They're all gonna be, uh, lumayed with LEDs. Um, which is, you know, up to the, the current code, the current, uh, standards that all signs are made of these days. Uh, and of course, they're all gonna be brand new. Um, they'll also be mounted, um, on the same line across the shopping center. As you know, now that there's a mix, mixture of signs, um, different sizes, different heights and, and, and elevations. So, uh, it'll be a lot cleaner look and they all conform to the eight percent of the, uh, available storefront. The only thing we're looking for is the illumination, which obviously, once it gets dark, you would want these signs to illuminate in the shopping center. You're gonna have people at Target right next door. So there should be a way that they could see what's over there, be it Polmby's, the liquor store, um, the nail salon. Um, so it's really just the illumination, which is gonna be, uh, white LEDs. Um, they're all gonna be diffused. Um, and obviously there'll be different color faces. It'll be vinyl applied to the plastic face, um, to produce those different colors.
And, uh, Cameron, if you wouldn't mind pulling up, there is a, um, it's called Stadium Plaza P Y L. I believe that is the, um, the pylon sign that we're proposing.
Right. Okay, there's an existing pylon sign, forty-one foot nine inches tall. The, uh, the replacement sign, uh, maintains the same height. Um, there is about a sixteen inch difference in the width. But that is only because where you're going to clad the, uh, columns that support the sign. Um, it just more aesthetically pleasing rather than have the steel I beams exposed. Um, this actual distance between the poles is actually gonna be reduced by three or four inches. So we're maintaining the same height, the same footprint, um, and the same coverage as the existing sign. Um, we do wanna move it ten feet to the south, I believe that would be. Um, it gets it more centered between the two tree lines as well as for economical reasons, it will allow us not to tear up the existing footing, which is sizable. So we'll put the new sign, uh, the new footing right alongside, uh, the old one. But, um, it's gonna consist of obviously all the tenant names. Of course, Target is gonna be the top billing. The Stadium Plaza letters up on top will be illuminated. There'll be individual channel letters. Um, and again, all the lighting is gonna be LED and it's all gonna be diffused with plastic, uh, with vinyl producing the, the various colors.
And, uh, we, we've already agreed with, uh, city planning that these, uh, lights would be turned off, uh, when business hours are over. These lights can obviously be turned off, correct?
That, that's correct. There'll be a timer to, to, to private that.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, I have no questions. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Travers. We appreciate it.
Um, that is the only testimony I was planning to provide. Uh, I just want to apologize and say, uh, I do, uh, Mr. Bulger is actually a, uh, licensed, uh, planner. Uh, I could have him get up and testify as to the, uh, requested variances. However, I do think they speak for themselves. This board has seen many, uh, signage packages before. Generally, when you have a, a project of this size, a mall of this size, you're gonna be asking for some sort of variance relief, uh, to conform to the situation. So it's up to the board whether they wanna hear that testimony, but like I said, I do think it speaks for itself.
Yeah, I agree. I think, uh, it speaks for itself, but I will, uh, ask Santo, do we need, uh, planning testimony in there?
Chairman, it's really up to, uh, Council. I don't believe it's necessary in light of the fact that the witness is a planner and has provided the testimonies provided this evening. So, uh, the record would reflect that he is a licensed planner.
Uh, I, I just wanna be clear. Well, it wasn't Mr. Travers. I, I do have Mr. Bulger, who is a licensed professional available to testify. Um, but I, again, I, I also agree with you. Uh, I don't think this is necessary and I, I don't think it advances the application.
Understood. Thank you, Council. Chairman, we can proceed then.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so if there's no other questions, I'll open it up for a public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Seeing no one from the public wishing to speak, I move to close.
Okay.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Cam, do you have anything you wanna add?
Yep, um, so Tom, you've already confirmed in email that the planning staff conditions, uh, listed in the memo dated April fourth, twenty twenty-three are acceptable. Can you just reconfirm that, please?
A- absolutely. Yes, I've reviewed and those conditions are acceptable.
Super. And then we'll, we'll add, of course, the chairman's condition, um, that these lights only remain illuminated during hours of operation. Um, so we'll have to add that to the reso. Um, so in regards to the variances, um, planning staff has reviewed this and has found that the variances do not in any way, um, impact negatively the W P D zone, nor do they compromise the intent of the zone um, or any of the objectives of the zone, um, or our master plan for that matter. So, um, these variances, um, are de minimis and we see them from time to time approved, um, across the city. And given the fact that there is no residential facing these businesses and it is located on Route four forty, again, planning staff finds that this will not have a negative impact on the public's general health, welfare or well-being. Um, in fact, it would likely improve their navigational, um, abilities and, um, could likely, uh, lead them to a site which would, um, benefit their general, uh, health, welfare, well-being. Um, and with that, uh, planning testimony, uh, staff recommends approval.
All right, thanks, Cam. And, uh, Council, I would like to just get you on record that you're okay with that extra condition on the, uh, signage just being illuminated during hours of operation.
That is correct. And I believe our sign expert testified that it will be set on a timer to turn off.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
The chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two, two dash one, nine, six as presented to us tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
All right, motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Let's move on.
Thank you so much.
All right, let's move on to item fifteen. It's the case P two, three dash zero, five, three. Is there an, I'm sorry, is an interim use extension for three years for seven, seventy Washington Boulevard?
All right, I'm getting James McCann up here.
Uh, good evening, um, Cameron. I have one potential witness. It's Matt Knowles from Dresden and Robin.
Okay, I am promoting Matt.
May I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go ahead, Council. Good evening.
Uh, good evening, uh, Commissioners, Chairman and, uh, Attorney and Staff, uh, James McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley appearing on behalf of Newport Associates Development Company in connection with property located at block uh, seven, three, oh, two, lot three point one, one, commonly known as seven, seventy Washington Boulevard, located in the Newport redevelopment plan area. Uh, the application before the board tonight and the relief requested from this board is the renewal of a three-year interim use application for a mobile concrete batching plant. Uh, the current ex- approval expires on June ninth of two thousand twenty-three. So the request is that it be renewed for another three years, beginning on June tenth of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, Council, we did provide notice to property owners within two hundred feet and to the Jersey Journal, I submitted an affidavit of service on May ninth, two thousand twenty-three. And just to note, this case was originally scheduled for hearing on May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and it was carried with preservation of notice to today's date. And you confirm receipt, Council?
Thank you, Council. I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. It does note that the meeting was for May ninth and it was carried through this evening. Uh, so we can mark that as A one. Council, just refresh my memory. I believe this might have been the last in-person meeting we had this application.
Uh, your recollection is better than mine then because I, I didn't quite remember that.
I thought you guys wanted to bring in the big block in what we were asking for materials?
You know, I don't think that was this application because, uh, the res- this, I was about to say as part of my presentation that this application was approved in May of twenty twenty. Were we still in person as of that date?
No.
No, right.
Hard no.
So applica- uh, so Council, you must be thinking of something else.
Another one that, but okay.
But, um, as I was going to say, this, this board originally approved this application in May of twenty twenty. Um, it was approved on the basis of the fact that, uh, Newport does not immediately need this site for redevelopment. Uh, the batching plant can facilitate the development of the balance of the Newport redevelopment plan because it provides uh, a, a very close approximate location to provide concrete for the continued development of Newport's new northeast quadrant as well as providing a local location for concrete for other redevelopment sites, uh, around Jersey City. And also there's no permanent improvement on the site. So it is truly, uh, a mobile concrete batching plant. Uh, it can be disabled, uh, and, and taken apart, uh, wh- when necessary so that some permanent redevelopment can occur on that site. Uh, those were the board's findings in twenty twenty. The applicant's position is nothing has really changed since then. The site has been operated in accordance with the approval granted in twenty twenty. Um, all those conditions and situations that I just mentioned still apply. Uh, Newport continues to develop its air, its redevelopment area. And as we know, the rest of the city is cruising along development-wise. Um, so I do have Matt Knowles here. He was the, he is the, uh, engineer that prepared the plans that the board approved. But if it pleased the board, um, I'll just open it up for questions from the board members and rely on my signed approved plans and my application documents that request, uh, the renewal for another three years. Um, if you'd like to hear from Mr. Knowles, I'll, I'll present some testimony. But if the board doesn't, I know you have a busy schedule as always, so, um, I'll rely on the papers filed.
Council, um, it's always a pleasure to hear, Mr. Knowles, but, uh, there's no changes to the, the site operation at all, correct? It's just, you know, an extension of the interim use?
There are no changes to the site apparation, operation. We are not requesting changes to the plans in any way, shape or form. Uh, it's just a straight up renewal application.
Okay, I'm fine going forward without testimony, um, unless anybody else has any questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you for coming anyway, Mr. Knowles. We appreciate it. Um, Council, I do have one question and, and we're really jar in the memory tonight. Um, I'm not sure if it was your application, but I think the replacement for this site was eventually gonna be in Liberty Harbor North. Um, is that still on the table? Or has that changed? That might not even been your application. I, I don't recall.
I, I do not think it was this application. I mean, um, my understanding from Newport is that this is the site for the concrete batching plant for the next three years. Um, I don't know anything beyond that. And I know in our last application, I renewed the transcript before my appearance tonight and there was no mention of Liberty Harbor North in our application at all.
I, I think that might have been, um, might have been Mr. Palino then, if I recall. I, I don't know. But, uh, okay, that was my only question. So, uh, if there's no other questions from the board, I'll open it up for a public comment. Um, if anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hands. If you are calling in and you wanna comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hands.
Seeing no one from the public, Mr. Chair, I move to close the session.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Cam, do you have anything you wanna add?
Um, yeah, I'm just quickly going to share my screen and show the planning staff memo. Um, so this is the planning staff memo dated May eleventh. Um, I, I just wanted to note that the applicant and, uh, uh, their organization here, um, they are doing all of the proper methods for dust suppressing. Uh, I know there were members of the community that, that contacted me and they asked, um, and, um, you know, I, I just wanted to put on the record that they are spraying their vehicles as we can see here. And, um, the, the site does meet all of the, um, design requirements that were put in place back in twenty twenty. Um, and here's the site photo from, uh, last week. So, um, anyway, um, yeah, planning staff only, uh, asked that Mr. McCann agree to the conditions that are in the staff report. They're the same conditions from the approval for, uh, three years ago.
Uh, the applicant agrees to those conditions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Um, and planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Cam.
Here, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two, three dash zero, five, three is presented to our board tonight.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you, Council. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time as always.
All right, uh, move on down. We're taking a big jump down to item twenty-one on the agenda. This is case P two, two dash two, two, nine is a minor site plan with C variances for forty-six Van Ripen Avenue.
Yes, I'm promoting Jeffrey Lewis and Danielle Kimback.
Just may get through our agenda tonight, Chairman.
Yeah. Come on, that can.
I, I don't know.
Cameron, have we heard from Mr. Burke? I don't wanna run into the same issue we ran into last meeting.
Um, no, Jim, Jim is on and he is waiting patiently. So.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Uh, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Danielle Kimback. I'm an attorney at Crime and To Bell. Uh, Mr. Benjamin Wine had a scheduling conflict, so I'm covering this application for him tonight. Represent the applicant Van Ripen Realty LLC. Um, we did submit an affidavit of notice that, uh, I did note is on the portal that we could access, but if the board attorney could just confirm receipt.
Thank you, Council. I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at forty-six Van Ripen Avenue. It was noticed for May ninth and it was carried through this evening. Uh, we can mark it as A one for purposes of the record.
Okay, thank you, Council.
Thank you. Uh, the application before you tonight is for minor site plan approval to convert an existing two and a half story, two-unit residential building to a three-story, six-unit residential building. The property is located at forty-six Van Ripen Avenue and it's designated as block seventy-nine, zero, three, lot forty-seven on the city tax map. The property is approximately two thousand square feet and it's located in the neighborhood mixed-use zone four of the Journal Square twenty-sixty redevelopment plan. The purpose of the application is to rehabilitate. The purpose of the application is to rehabilitate, expand and convert the existing structure as envisioned by the redevelopment plan through adaptive reuse. The structure meets all the bulk, the proposed structure meets all the bulk requirements of the redevelopment plan. Um, however, the application requires one bulk variance related to the front landscaping. Um, the regional plan requires sixty percent front landscaping, and the applicant is providing forty-three percent front yard landscaping. However, the existing condition is zero percent front landscaping. Um, so it's a substantial improvement to the existing conditions. In conjunction with um, removing some of that impervious cover in the front yard, the applicant will also be uh. Closing a portion of the existing curb cut, so that'll provide more street frontage and curbing for street parking in front of the property. And I just want to note that prior to this hearing, our office did reach out to the Journal Square Community Association on a number of occasions, but we had not received any response regarding this application. Uh, so with me tonight, there, I think, believe they're both already on the panel. We have Mr. Jeffrey Lewis, our architect, and we have uh, Mr. Charles Height, our professional planner. Um, so I I guess Mr. Height was sworn in, but uh, Mr. Lewis could be sworn in.
Yep.
Hi Jeff, do you want any testimony to give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state, explain your name, please?
Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I F.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, good evening. Always a pleasure. Uh, your license in the state of New Jersey is current tonight?
My license is at current active, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna start right here. During my screen. And these are the plans which are on the portal, just so everybody knows. Okay, so again, we have an existing two-and-a-half-story building here. We are proposing to renovate the exterior and the front. Uh, change that half-story into a full-third story and then add a new addition to the rear of the building. Uh, we'll have six apartments in the new building. Uh, four of them are two-bedroom apartments and two of them are one-bedroom apartments. I just want to go through the site plans. We have the uh, existing on top, proposed on the bottom. Uh, so we do have an existing two-and-a-half-story building located on the front half of the property. Uh, looking at the front. Um, we do have a existing front porch with front steps going down. All the rest of the front yard on our property is concrete. Uh, this area is currently used for parking, and in the front, we do have one existing street tree and a depressed curb, as was mentioned. Uh, sliding down to the proposed, we are keeping the street tree, however, we are getting rid of the parking space. So we're proposing a new curb, a new concrete curb with no curb cut. Uh, new concrete sidewalks. And then on our property, we're keeping that front porch and we're keeping the front steps. And we're only keeping the concrete in small areas, just one small path. To the front stairs and then second small path, which leads to a side alley that we have existing on the house. Uh, and then the rest of the front yard will be infilled with uh, lawn. Uh, so no more parking here. Again, the the building itself. Uh, the existing building, which was two-and-a-half stories, will be raised to three stories. This section here is a three-story addition to the back, and then at the very rear, we have a one-story addition to the building. Um, and the last thing I want to note, it's not shown here, but we are providing a stormwater detention system. Uh, and plans that were also submitted, so that will be part of this application as well. Here we're looking at existing of the proposed floor plans for all these. The top plan will be the existing plan, the bottom plan will be the proposed. Uh, this is the cellar. We have an existing cellar, and it will stay existing. We're not adding any new space to the cellar. Um, it's access here from an interior staircase from the first floor. And what we have down here are our meter rooms. Our uh, sprinkler room, as this will be a fully sprinkled building. Uh, storage area, which includes a bicycle storage area for eight bicycles. And then our trash room as well. Moving on to the first floor, again, I want to walk down here at the proposed. Uh, you enter off of that existing porch into the main lobby. The main lobby access to stair up as well as the front doors to apartment number one, apartment number two on the ground floor. Um, I should mention right now, all the apartments in the building. Um, have washer dryer in the apartment, and they all have electric heat pumps for heat and air conditioning. Um, looking at this floor specifically, we have a two-bedroom apartment in the front here. And then in the back, we have a another two-bedroom apartment, which also has. A little private terrace off to the side, and this is a fifty-four square foot uh patio, which has access to the side alley. Um, and the last thing I think I forgot to mention is these two apartments on the first floor are going to be our ADA adaptable apartments in the building. Okay, moving on to the second floor. Second floor, we also have two apartments. Uh, the front apartment here is a one-bedroom apartment. We have a common stair. And then in the back, we have a smaller two-bedroom apartment. Uh, and this apartment actually has a private roof deck off the back on that one-story addition. Uh, the size of this roof deck is four hundred and twenty-three square feet. Looking at the third floor, we had what was a half-story underneath the pitched roof. And what we're doing is we're proposing to make that a full-height uh, third story. Um, it's a very similar layout to below with a one-bedroom apartment in the front and a two-bedroom apartment in the back. Uh, differences are that the two-bedroom apartment in the back obviously does not have a roof deck to utilize. And in the front of the building, we actually are setting back this front wall, a little one, about two feet from the front of the building. And this is to allow for the existing gable to stay and remain a prominent feature on that front elevation. Uh, I think that'll be a little clearer when I get to the front elevation, what we're doing there. And then lastly, floor plan wise, uh, this is the new roof plan. It's not really accessible. We just have a roof hatch to provide access for our condensers. And we also have two skylights, one in the staircase and a second in the living room of the back apartment. Here we're moving on to the building elevations. These are the front and the rear elevations with the existing. On the left, which is finished basically all with vinyl siding, and then the new proposed to the right where we're refinishing the entire building. So, starting on the bottom of the front elevation. Uh, we do have a brick base, which we're going to repair and repaint gray color. The wood stairs to the front porch will be repaired and repainted white. Uh, the porch columns also will be repaired and painted white. Uh, the porch pediment is going to be rebuilt with AZAC, with white AZAC um, finish. There's some trim work that you can see here that's surrounding that pediment. And we're going to paint that trim where we've heard as we needed and paint it black. Looking over to the left, we have this two-story bay window, which is going to be refinished with AZAC siding. Um, and then the first and second stories, the what was the vinyl siding finish will be replaced. With a fiber cement siding, and the color of that siding is. Forgot the name, I'm sorry. Uh, is evening blue. That's on the first and second floor. Then looking up to the third floor, inside this gable section. We are also proposing fiber, fiber cement siding, but these are shake siding, um, which will be white in color. And then. Lastly, up here, this is that wall that's set back two feet from that front gable. And this is going to be finished with a white vinyl siding to match the sides and rear of the building. Um, all the, all the windows here are black vinyl framed windows. And the front door, which you can see a little better here, is existing. We're going to keep it, repair it as we need to, and then paint that black as well. Looking at the rear elevation down below. Um, again, at the, at the second and third floor, we'll be finished with that white vinyl siding. And then the ground floor is close to the property line, so that will be a block wall that will be finished with a smooth stucco finish painted gray. This is the left side elevation where we have our sidewalk way. Um, this is mostly the same finishes as the rear, actually, where we have a white vinyl siding. On the existing building and on the setback section of the new building. And um, a smooth stucco finish where we're closer to the property line, again, painted gray. And then lastly, on the right side, it is the same. Uh, where the existing building is finished with the white vinyl siding and the new addition, which will be on the property line. Is finished in uh, as a block wall with a smooth stucco finish painted gray. Um, that would conclude my testimony as far as what we're doing here. Um. Happy to stick around and answer any questions that anyone might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Just a couple of quick ones. Um.
Sure.
Is the existing building sprinkled, sprinkled already?
No, it's not. We're adding that.
Okay, so um, yeah, I see two back flows in your basement. Um. Are they twin together? Is, um. Obviously a combined service coming in, but does that service split? In the street?
I'm sorry, I'm going there now. I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about. I missed that. Are we showing, are we showing one water meter and one, and one sprinkler meter?
No, no, my question is, so I see the two meters in the basement in the water equipment room.
Right.
Nah, sheet A one hundred. Um, does the service come in and then split in that room to those two backflow meters? Or there's two separate services coming in?
We are doing, oh, we didn't show it on here, huh? Um. I actually, I think we have a single line coming in and it splits. I think that's what Jersey City has been asking us to do.
Okay, so it splits inside the the equipment room. All right. And um, there's no stormwater retention currently, right? You're adding that as well.
No, yes, that's correct. It's non-existent.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you. Um, all right, anybody else from Mr. Lewis?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, our next witness is Mr. Height, our professional planner.
Okay, Mr. Height has been sworn in, has been qualified already tonight, and uh, Mr. Height, if you can just confirm that you understand you're still under oath?
I understand I'm still under oath, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
All right, I I'll uh, get right into it. Um, with respect to the planning aspects of this application, we are requesting one deviation, actually variance from the. Required front yard landscaping. Um, we are in Journal Square uh, twenty-sixty plan in the zone four. Uh, we're a few blocks north of the Journal Square Pass Station. Um, so we're in a very urban environment. This particular uh, strip of Van Ripen has a mix of homes, uh, some detached homes. This in particular is an attached. Uh, uh, sing, uh, multi-family house. Uh, across the street, there are attached townhouses, so there is a variety. Of town, of homes and structures in the area. Um, with respect to this specific property, there's a few nuances. Uh, we're at the, we're the last attached dwelling. We actually have a, a side yard setback from the. One property to the west of ours, which also has a a setback to their side lot line. Um, and that creates that side yard uh, alleyway that Mr. Lewis referenced. Um. How that relates to the front yard landscaping is because we carry that access forward to the street. Um, so that's an added unique element to the front yard area. Um, we are also, as, as we heard from the opening from Mr. Kimback, um, we are converting this from a zero percent. In uh, impervi- a hundred percent impervious front yard. Um, to what would be actually a forty-five point three percent pervious. Uh, so substantial improvement over existing conditions. Again, we're retaining the porch area. And the walkway and steps to the porch, and I, as I referenced earlier, that unique condition of that side yard setback and the accessway. Uh, with that side uh, sidewalk going to the um, side of the property. Uh, when we evaluated those aspects, we did find that that fit the bill of what would be a C-one hardship test. Maintaining that side yard access, um, obviously is to provide for an appropriate means of of of. Space and separation for the building as well as the the existing access there. Um, it does impact the ability for the front yard to comply with the sixty percent requirement. Uh, had we removed the side yard sidewalk along the side yard, we likely would be able to comply. So from a technical standpoint, I do think it needs that C-one hardship test where providing the appropriate access limits us to complying with the landscaping. With respect to purposes of of uh, redevelopment of planning, um, we do have special reasons here. Uh, as they apply, I think we are meeting the intent of the Journal Square redevelopment plan. We do not require any relief for the. Structure and the addition that complies. Um, so we are in full um. Appropriate population density, which is purpose E, uh, as well as making the renovations to the existing structure. Um, which supports the desirable visual environment and the improved front yard landscaping. That's purpose I. With respect to the native criteria, again, um, this is in the Journal Square twenty-sixty plan. The proposed improvements are aimed directly at the intent of the redevelopment plan. Which is to encourage uh, a um, variety of housing, uh, to reduce automobile dependency. We're removing that off-street parking space. We're reducing the curb cut, um, and that directly is. In relationship to the proposed improvements in the front yard. Um, I don't believe there's any negative impact to the general welfare with respect to the the uh, lack of landscaping. Uh, in my opinion, all the improvements to the front facade and the front yard uh, do have. Uh, an improvement to the general welfare and actually aid in the um, increase of pedestrian uh, walkability in the overall environment. Along this section of Van Ripen. That's my direct testimony. This application and the the variance is pretty straightforward. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Height. We appreciate it. Um, I have no questions. Anybody else from Mr. Height?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our direct uh, testimony. I'd just like to reserve the right to respond to any public comments if necessary.
Sure, of course. So uh, at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody from the public that wants to. Oh, go ahead.
Just one question for counsel. Uh, Mr. Kimback, when you said you reached out to the Journal Square Association, which I'm a member of. Uh, do you recall to whom you reached out?
Um, I have, it was Mr. Wine from our office. Uh, he reached out to a Chris. The email address doesn't give a name. It's. Okay.
I, no, he's generally exceptionally good at getting back to people, uh, not, I mean. You, I mean, you you weren't the one, so uh. I'll bring it up when I, when I see him, but uh. I, I just was curious. Thanks, Chairman.
You got it. Anytime. Uh, all right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody from the public wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Sure, I see no public. I move to close.
Okay.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Cam, are you handling this for Liz? I don't see her on tonight.
Ye- yes, yeah, so um, what I'm gonna do is I'm going to share her. Staff report, and we're gonna mark it into evidence, okay? Um. So uh, give me one moment while I bring that up.
Karen, you can share. We don't have to mark it as it's her staff report. It's part of the record.
Um, I don't think that was on the portal, though.
No, it wasn't.
The marking is B one, please.
Yeah, all right. So uh, here is um, this is Oprah's uh, staff report. And um. Just going to scroll down. Those were the items she reviewed. This is just a uh, site identification, um, aerial. Uh, summary of existing crit- conditions, the proposed conditions. The variance, which uh, has been covered by uh, Mr. Height's testimony. Um, and then their staff comments saying that they do not feel that this is a sub- substantial detriment to the public good. Or in any way jeopardizing uh, the intent of the zone plan. Um. And uh, to go a step further, also, uh, planning staff believes it does not in any way jeopardize the goals and objectives of. The city's master plan. Um, and then with that, planning staff would just ask that their uh, attorney agree uh, for their client to the conditions stated. Herein. Are are these conditions acceptable?
Yes, the applicant can agree to the conditions in Miss Oppers' report.
Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, and with that, planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Cam. We appreciate it.
I'd like to make a motion at this time to uh, approve case P two-two dash two-two-nine is presented to us tonight.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipinski.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Um, yeah, I agree with Cam's testimony as well as uh, Mr. Heights. I don't think there's any detriment to the master plan or the zone plan. I think the added benefit of the uh, street.
I think the added benefit of the uh, street parking space being added, the uh, curb cut being eliminated. We do have a uh, building with fire sprinklers now, and uh, there is stormwater retention, so I think those are additional benefits, and um, I think this is an easy eye.
All right, motion carries. All in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you. And counsel, please, counsel, please tell Mr. Wine, I hope he wasn't at another board tonight.
I will, but he is.
Unacceptable. Tell him, tell him we're the most important. Um.
There already is.
I think he'll, he'll be back for the next one.
Okay, can't wait. Um.
You did a heckuva job, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. We appreciate it.
First Jersey City hearing for me.
Beautiful.
All right, um, Mike, do you want to get one more in before we take a break? I think uh.
Yeah, the next one's a.
Yeah, I think it's short, right?
Could be short, yeah. All right, so let's uh, call item twenty-two as case P two-three dash zero three-eight is a minor site plan for one twenty-five eighteenth Street.
Uh, promoted. Uh, hello, Carmen, are you there?
Uh, hi, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get the, start the video. Good evening. Hi. So this is application number, I'm sorry, it's um, a minor site application. It's for signage LED illuminated aluminum channel letters uh, with high gloss. I represent the applicant and I have with me on on uh, standby in the event that we need him, Mr. Brendan Tahari. We have reviewed the staff notes that we received and uh, we accept the conditions that, that are stated in there. Having said that, it's a minor site plan application.
All right, thank you, counsel. Um. I don't know that the board needs any additional testimony for a minor site plan. Anybody, any questions?
Nope.
No.
No, okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, counsel, the only um, condition I would ask for, I don't know if you've heard the rest of the applications tonight, but uh, I generally ask for a condition that the signage is only illuminated during business hours.
I, I, I did, and it's actually listed as in one of the comments um, in the staff memo. So yes, we accept that.
Excellent. Good. I'm glad to see Tim beat me to it. Uh. All right, so uh, if there's nothing else, counsel, I'd like to just go to public comment if that's okay with you, when uh, obviously you can respond to uh, any comments as needed.
That's fine, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Chairman, seeing no one from the public wishing to speak, I move to close.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
Um. Only to clarify that actually I made the staff report and put that in there. Sorry, Cam. No, it's all right. It says Tim on there, but um, he actually didn't review of this one before he left. Um. And I actually issued the complete, but um, for whatever reason, it says his name. It doesn't matter. Tim is a great friend of mine, and I'm happy to give him credit any day. Um. Lord knows, he taught me a lot. Um, but anyway, um, thank you, um, Ms. Vendiola and uh, planning staff uh, with the agreement to the conditions in this uh, staff memo, planning staff recommends.
Okay, thanks, Cam.
To your chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve case P two-three dash zero-three-eight as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Good job, counsel. I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I say I, good job, Carmen.
Commissioner.
Hi.
And Chairman Leiston.
Hi.
Motion carries. All in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Good evening.
You too. Have a good night. Uh, all right, Mike, do you want to get five in now?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, uh, it's eight fifty-three. We'll be back at eight fifty-eight. I'm sorry, it's eight fifty-four. We'll be back at eight fifty-nine. Thank you, everybody. All right, let's come to order again, everybody, please. Okay, so we're uh, down to item twenty-four as case P two-two dash zero-eight-six is a minor site plan for five twenty-seven Newark Avenue.
Um, yeah, Mr. Burke is up here. I'm just waiting for him to get his equipment going.
Hi, good evening, all.
Good evening, counsel. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. How are you, counsel?
Very good, thank you.
So we're up to twenty-four? Is that it?
Yes, we are, but Mr. Burke, I have to let you know, you've got two applications and we're losing a commissioner in about fifteen minutes. So I expect to get through both of those.
All right, so I will go quite quickly, I hope. Um, the good news here is that we believe the application is fully compliant um, except for the need for minor site plan. Um, so I would only produce one witness. And uh, but counsel, I would first note, we have been, this matter has been carried from April twenty-fifth to May ninth, and we did submit a proof of notice to owners within two hundred feet. So hopefully you have that in front of you or you have access to it.
I do, counsel. Counsel, I even received an affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the May ninth date that was carried to this evening. All does appear to be in order. We'll mark it as A one for the record, and again, it is five twenty-seven Newark Avenue.
Okay, so the uh, witness I have is Dirk Garlic. Can you admit him into the uh, the room, please?
Promoted, Mr. Garlic.
And Jim, you want to swear him in when he's in? All right. Hi, Derek, how you doing? I'll swear you in, all right?
Good evening, thank you.
If you could raise your right hand. You swear any testimony you get tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state, spell your name, please?
Dirk Garlic, D E R K, G A R L I C K.
Thank you.
Mr. Garlic, good evening. Uh, I believe we've qualified you in the past, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and your license is still current in the state of New Jersey tonight?
It is. It is currently standing in good standing.
Excellent, thank you. You're qualified.
All right, so um, Dirk, what I'd like you to do, we received a review letter from um, uh, from planning staff today. Uh, and uh, I'd like you to focus on the uh, staff comments. But also, before you do that, and I know we, we want to move as quickly as possible, but also try to be thorough. Uh, would you just uh, give the board the benefit of a general description of the application as far as the architectural plans? Uh, and describe the, the facade in particular, and again, focusing on the comments that were provided by Stan.
Sure, certainly. Uh, so we're proposing a five-story building. It's four stories above a, a ground floor, commercial retail space. Uh, we are in the NC Neighborhood Commercial District and Preserv- Palisades Preservation Overlay. Uh, the, if we were to go through, would you, would you like me to share the screen?
Yeah, I think that would be useful.
Yep. All right. Good.
We got it, yes.
Okay. Okay, so from the uh, the, the approved zoning chart, and we have uh, two hundred two thousand five hundred square feet is minimum lot size. Our existing lot size is two thousand two hundred and nine. It is an existing non-conforming condition. Uh, the minimum width is twenty-five feet, existing is twenty-five, so we're conforming. We have a hundred feet in lot depth is required. We have eighty-eight point three, and it's a non-conforming condition. Uh, all the other, uh, just to kind of speed things along, all the other uh, uh, zoning items within the zoning chart are a conforming issue. Uh, we're not requesting any variance as part of this application. Uh, we were, we're here primarily because we uh, surpassed the uh, uh, maximum requirement that then uh, kicks us in for a minor uh, site plan requirement. Yeah, uh, just jump to the uh, existing condition. At the site currently, there is a, a small Chinese restaurant. Uh, this is uh, located on the corner or, or near the corner of the Dix- Dickinson High School. Uh, so there's a, a lot of traffic and uh, pedestrian traffic down the street, so keeping in line with that uh, Neighborhood Commercial District retail on the ground floor was part of the priority of the project. Uh, the existing one-story building is and shed and apartments in the rear yard are being uh, completely removed. And uh, a new uh, concrete base with uh, a wood structure, additional four-story wood structure above it is being composed. Um, at the ground level, we uh, have an entrance, uh, but we started our site plan. Uh, at, at the uh, sidewalk, we are propos- uh, including and proposing a new street tree and street pit. Uh, satisfying the requirements of the, the zoning provision. In the rear yard, we have a, a grass area and a, a concrete paved area for exit out the rear of the building and to act, and for uh, pads for the condensing unit. Uh, the it's, the entrance foyer off the street, uh, there'll be two double doors, one to uh, knee grass staircase and the other into the entrance lobby. Uh, we come into the entrance lobby. There's a full ADA accessible, uh, stretcher accessible uh, elevator that takes us up to each uh, individual unit of uh, successive floors, uh, two, three, and four and five. And those, each of those floors are individual unit. Um, uh, with the, the private access through the elevator. Uh, through the back down, uh, through the back hallway is uh, there's gonna be a small electrical roof, access to the second stairway, uh, refuse area and uh, fire pump uh, provisions for the fire pump and RPT unit.
Dirk, I need to just interrupt. Uh, I'll also, I'll make sure you, you focus on the facade materials. That was something mentioned in the report.
Okay, well, we'll uh, wrap up these plans pretty quick and I'll, I'll hit the, the facade. Uh, the unit, the individual floors are uh, a repeat of themselves as you uh, proceed up through uh, the structure. Uh, we have an open, uh, open plan concept with a three-bedroom layout, central hall, uh, two-bed, uh, three-bedroom, two-back uh, configuration. As you see, the units are about uh, one thousand four hundred and seventy-five square feet. Uh, and it's unit two, three, and four. Uh, the top floor at the roof, uh, we do have um, full staircases, uh, protruding to the roof line, uh, for egress and the elevator, uh, to it a vestibule that accesses the roof as well. So this is a shared amenity space for everyone in the building. Uh, they, we are putting the condensers on the roof, but uh, there'll be step back from the front and uh, 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 hidden fr- you know, from the public view, from the street view with the par- with the parapet that extends up from the uh, the roof level. Uh, as Jim was mentioning, the front facade is going to be uh, ACM panel. They're aluminum clad, uh, metal panels. Uh, they're gonna be a two-tone, uh, silver and black, uh, two-tone with uh, curtain wall, uh, facade, vertical curtain wall facade that extends up the uh, the primary uh, living areas. And then there'll be a, a Juliet balcony with a, with a glass, uh, a laminated glass uh, rail system that's in front of the door. So we're gonna get, you know, tons of light into these, into these units. Um, uh, both into the, in the living area and into the, the bedroom that it services. Uh, the, the sidewalks of the building are going to be a. The sidewalls of the building are going to be a smooth silver stucco. As well as the rear facade. We go to the rear facade, we are proposing within the guidelines, they allow to have a half-width exterior balcony. We're proposing to put that off the living area on each of the floors so that they have some exterior space. And again, another Juliet balcony with the sliding glass doors with the glass rail in front, you know, directly six inches in front of that, that glass door. Both sides, as I said, as they extend above the adjacent buildings, we'd be finished with a smooth stucco. And the idea of the concept behind this is that they are condos for sale. We're trying to make this have a a nice, luxurious, you know, full-service kind of look to the building and clients pretty excited to get this project going.
Utilities are existing and will be connected to existing utilities?
No, we're bringing in new, 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 new utilities for the whole building. So we have a new, new four-inch water service that splits off to the, both the fire suppression system and the domestic line. That's shown on our utilities plan. Same with the gas and sanitary sewer system.
Okay, thank you.
There's any questions? Happy to answer questions. I didn't run through that too quick, but I know that we're trying to get, Jim's trying to get through two projects.
And Will? Was, um, that was great, Mr. Garlic, we appreciate it. I do know you said there's a fire pump in the building. I'm surprised you need a fire pump for five stories there.
Well, in our experience, we make provisions for a fire pump until I've told that it's not required. When we get, as we get further into the project, if we haven't made room for a fire pump room. It creates a lot of headaches for us. So when the hydraulic calculations come back and the engineer does his final engineering, that would be determined. But certainly, we've provided room for that in, in the on that ground floor, and if we can increase the size of the refuse room, if that fire pump's not required, I'm sure, I'm certain that's, that space would be appreciated there.
Okay, great, thank you. That was, that was my only question. Anybody else, anything?
No.
All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Yep.
And if he could, please just stop your screen share. All right.
That concludes our presentation. The applicant is here if there's any other questions, but as I said, since it's minor site plan with no variances, we do not have a planner with us.
Okay, thank you, Council. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise that hand.
And move to public. Sorry.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Francisco, this is yours, anything you want to add?
Yeah, so I'll be very brief. As was mentioned, there are no variances for this project. The application, in staff's opinion, furthers the intent of the zone plan, master plan, and overall does not cause any detriments to the neighborhood. And with that said, staff recommends approval with conditions outlined in my staff report.
Okay, and Council, you're okay with those conditions?
Yes, we are for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve case P two-two dash zero eight-six as presented to the board.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
On the motion to approve, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Um, Mr. Burke, don't go anywhere. We, we, for item twenty-eight is case P two-three dash zero three-five. Is a preliminary and final major site plan for one oh four Harbor Drive.
Okay, thank you very much. For the record, James Burke representing the applicant, this matter was also carried from a trial hearing. I'm just looking, so Council, you have the proof of service and so forth?
I do. Chairman, I am and receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at one oh four Harbor Drive here in the city. All does appear to be in order. It was noticed for May ninth and carried through to tonight's meeting with the preservation of that notice, which we mark it as A-one for the record.
All right, thank you, Council.
Very much. And there should be three witnesses waiting. One would be Steve McCormick. And then a Robert Walsh, and then a Luke Gong, G O N G. If you can admit those three individuals.
All right, I don't see a Steven out there, so I don't know, is he one of these S S underscore Q, oh, yep, looks like it, yeah.
Is he, are we able to get him, Cameron?
Well, we have A S U S underscore Q five three eighty.
Okay, he's on mute, he's on mute, though. Steve, is that you? A S S, A S U S?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, all right. So in brief, the applicant seeking a new freezer, which would be a little over ten thousand square feet, would be built on the, the existing property that's owned by the applicant. And so I wanted to introduce Steve McCormick is the applicant's representative tonight. And Steve, I'd like you to just, as I walked the site with you, and you explained to me what had happened with the existing cooler and freezer. If you could just give the board a, you know, one-minute summary of why this is needed. And then we can move on to Robert Walsh and Luke, if necessary, to describe the actual freezer and the engineering features of the freezer.
And just before Steve goes, Steve, are you able to turn your video on?
Council, I don't know how, how necessary a lot of that testimony is. It's a preliminary and final major site plan. We're talking about a ten thousand square foot addition to a hundred thousand square foot existing building?
Correct.
And it's not triggering any variances from what I was able to, to see.
That's correct, Council. And we can, we can go, I know the hour's late, so we can go past Steve. There were some issues involving the existing freezer and, which is requiring a new freezer, but I, I, I'm happy to move forward and have Robert Walsh introduced. He's the engineer, and he can describe more of the details on the freezer. And we also did receive comments from the city engineer. And, and then we can go into that for a few minutes as well, but yeah, this is, I don't want to overly complicate this. There are no variances. And it's on the existing property, so why don't we bring up Mr. Walsh?
Okay, thank you. And yeah, I trust that the applicant needs a new ten thousand square foot freezer. I'm okay with that.
All right, so Rob, I will swear you in, if you could raise your right hand. These were any testimony you get tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state, spell your name, please?
Robert E. Walsh. Chief Civil and Environmental Engineer for EI Associates, H. Ridgedale Ave., Seaton, Alston, Jersey.
Thank you. You're a little quiet, if you could just speak up or do something.
Mr. Walsh, good evening. I don't recall if we've qualified you in the past, have we?
It's been thirty years since I worked on the Brownstone Diner. Minor site plan, so that's last time I was in Jersey.
You know what? Given that legacy, I'm fine if you just tell me your license is current tonight.
License is current.
Okay, thank you, sir, you're qualified.
All right, so, so Robert, please just describe the details that are going into this freezer and give the board the benefit of those details.
Okay, I'm not a good screen sharer, or it's very unreliable.
I can share my screen.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, I'll bring up the engineering drawings, one second.
Yeah. And Council, for the record, we have the city engineering letter. It has five comments on it. And the majority of with them are drainage, water connections, you have to get JCMUA approval seventy-two hours prior commencement of construction, can't build in the city right of way. So I don't know how much we need to get into any of those. I am sure we'll obviously deal with all of those requirements. So let's just talk about the ten thousand square foot freezer addition. Is it just being added to the building? Is it a prefab situation?
Yes, it's being added to the southern corner of the property, southeast, if you want, north is diagonally to the upper right. It's a four-point-four acre site with roughly a hundred thousand square foot building, and we're doing a little over ten thousand square feet. There's two existing, pre-existing non-conformities for side yard on the west side, it's fifteen feet. And on the south side, the existing non-conformity is three and a half feet. So we're staying under the building coverage, which is allowable, is sixty-five. We're staying under the FAR, which is allowable is one, and we're at point six. It's being built on an existing paved area, so there's no increase in impervious coverage. There'll be one loading dock added. There are presently nine loading docks. Not all of them are used constantly. And that's pretty much it. If you want to scroll to the next frame, you'll see exactly where that addition is. Your square footage is labeled in the footprint. And that notched area is the loading dock, and it's, it's purely functions as a freezer. You know, in connection with their distribution and warehousing operation.
And Robert, the comments that were, that Council referenced from the city engineer, those conditions will be accepted by the applicant?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
I mean, Chairman, we don't see too many that are so straightforward, but I would, I would go out on a limb and say this is one of them.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I have no questions, Mr. Walsh, anybody else?
No.
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh, we appreciate you. Let's not make it another thirty years, all right? Come back and see you soon.
Well, I'll, I'll rest the case at that point. I don't want to belabor it, but I, I, I think it's a record for me anyway, as far as potentially the fastest matter, which I'm, I'm quite grateful for, if the board is willing to approve this.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna use you as a paradigm for future presentations.
All right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand.
Chairman, I wish you speak by motion to close.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed.
Yeah, it's me.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I, you know, it's redundant at this point, but I just have to read into the record, or two, two conditions. And ask the attorney to agree to them for the applicant. James, thank you for agreeing to addressing the engineering comments already. That was one of the conditions. And here are the remaining two. So no change to the site design shall be permitted without consultation with and approval by planning staff. That's the first one to add. And then the second one is that all testimony given by the applicant and their expert witnesses in accordance with this application shall be binding. And do you agree to those two conditions?
The applicant agrees to those two conditions.
Okay, and, and the engineering conditions, which you already agreed to, so, um, yeah, with that, planning staff has no further comments and planning staff recommends approval.
All right, thanks, Cam.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-three dash zero three-five as presented to us tonight.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Thanks, Mr. Burke, I vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
So I've actually had the pleasure of working in a, a, a working freezer like this, and it's a special breed that works in there, so it's a necessary use, and I'm happy to see it in the area, so I'm gonna vote aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Council, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. Good night, Council.
All right, so
Thank you.
Let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I think I have eleven today. I make a motion to memorialize the following resolutions. First one is of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number P two-one-die-zero-two-three. Applicant is ninety-seven Layde Law LLC, address two thirty-six to two thirty-eight Academy Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-two-two-zero-four. That's twenty-three and twenty-four, decided on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Application for preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variances. Number two is resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, number P two-three-die-zero-five-five. Applicant was two-five-two Monticello LLC, address two-five-two Monticello Ave., Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-five-two-zero-three. Lot two, decided on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Memorialized on Tuesday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. This was an application for extension of prior approvals. Number three is a resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number P two-three-die-zero-five-one. Applicant is Nate Neal, Badi Yadara, address two-nine-two Grand Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-five-one-zero-five, lot three, decided on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Application for extension of prior approvals. Number four, resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, applicant five-twenty-nine Liberty Avenue LLC, five-twenty-nine Liberty Ave. Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-two-zero-two, lot forty-three, creating block one-two-zero-two, lots forty-three dot zero one and forty-three dot zero two, decided on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Application for a minor subdivision. Number five is resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board. The applicant is six-twenty-six Summit Avenue LLC for preliminary and final major site plan amendment approval with deviation six-twenty-two dash six-twenty-eight. Summit Avenue, block six-seven-zero-one, lot twenty-one zero dot zero one, formerly lots twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Jersey City, New Jersey, case number P two-two dash one-four-eight. Next resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board in the matter of Neon Heights LLC. Approving an application for conditional use to operate a class-five cannabis retailer establishment at five-thirty-five Newark Street. Block number nine-six-zero-one, lot one-four. P twenty-two dash two thirty-one, decided on May ninth, twenty twenty-three. Seventh resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, hearing date was April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. The applicant was Reno MA Summit UR LLC. For a three-one-year extension of preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variances at one ninety-eight Academy Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-two-three-o-one. Lot two, case number P two-three dash zero six-eight. Resolution number eight of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, hearing date April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Applicant is Mata Vechnavi SIP LLC for one, one-year extension of preliminary and final major site plan approval with a C deviation at two thirty-two dash two thirty-eight SIP Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey. Block one-zero-five-zero-two, lots fifteen through eighteen, case number P two-three-die-zero-six-four. Next, number nine is resolution of the Jersey City Planning Board, case number P two-three-die-zero-two-two, applicant five-five-eight Communipaw LLC. The address is five-five-eight Communipaw Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-eight-six-zero-two, lot eight. This was decided on Tuesday, April fourth, twenty twenty-three, application for preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variances. Number ten is a resolution of the Planning Board, the City of Jersey City approving a site plan extension of the preliminary major site plan and minor subdivision approval with deviations and conditions. The applicant's twenty-carbon place corp for approval of a one-year site plan extension of the previously approved preliminary and final major site plan and and final major site plan and minor subdivision with deviations and conditions. The property at twenty Carbon Place, lot two-two-one-zero-three, lots twelve and seventeen. Case number is P two-three dash zero zero one. And final resolution is resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City approving a site plan extension of the preliminary major site plan approval with conditions. Applicant is five-seventy Washington ground owner LLC for approval of a one-year site plan extension of the previously approved preliminary major site plan with conditions. Property at five-seventy Washington Boulevard, block seven-three-o-two dot o-two, lot three, case number P two-three dash zero three-four.
All right, thanks, doctor. I have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for memorialization. Cam, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion passes all in favor to memorialize resolutions.
All right, thank you, everybody. Do we need an executive session, anybody?
Nope.
Nope.
Good news.
Everybody got home early today because of me. Let's go Yankees.
So I'm just thinking, you know, that we had, we voted on batching plants and freezers. These could be like sets for a sequel to The Soprano, but anyway. I'm out.
You know what, Steve, I'll take you to one of these freezers one day.
Yeah, they're fun.
Yeah, dress warm, dress warm.
Hey, I'm Polish and Capricorn, I'll go.
Chris, I thought you were rushing everything because you want to make sure I finish it up and everything. I was like, wow, this is nice. They're making sure everything works for me, and that way I could go to the Yankee game.
Yeah, I want to get you out of here. I want to get you out of town.
Yeah.
All right, Chad. Motion to adjourn this.
Second.
All right, motion and second, sorry, we're canceling you. All right, guys, we are adjourned. Thank you, we appreciate your time.
Good night. Great Memorial Weekend.
You too.
Thank you.
All right.